And we are now at our Pledge of Allegiance. And can I have our Yolo County Clerk Jesse Salinas, please lead us in the pledge?
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you so much. So that takes us to our roll call. Clerk Coffey.
Present.
Trustee Pazadi.
Present.
And I too am present. And Vice President Wong and Trustee Vinegas will not be with us this evening, but welcome. We're happy to have you, our student board member. And announcements of actions taken in closed session. We have a government code section 54957, public employee discipline dismissal release. Information received. Government code section 54957.6, conference with labor negotiators, WSTA, CSCA, and management. Information received and direction given. Government code section 54957, public employee superintendent evaluation. Information received. Are there any changes to the agenda this evening?
No changes.
Okay. Okay, then can I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Okay, moved by Trustee Pazadi and seconded by Trustee Coffey, all in favor?
Aye.
And I too vote aye. And that takes us to our communications and celebrations. We have our recognition of the YES Civic Engagement Award recipients. And I'd like to welcome up Jesse Salinas, our Yolo County Assessor and Clerk Recorder Register of Voters.
Yes, good evening, President Kirby Gonzalez and trustee members Jesse Salinas. Yes, the acronym is ACE, Assessor Clerk Recorder. We hyphenate the Clerk Recorder, that's why it's not acre. Eight sounds a little bit better than acre. So Assessor Clerk Recorder and Elections Official, and I'm wearing my hat. And one of the things to share with you is I'd actually brought some information for those interested to learn about it, both in English and Spanish, of what ACE is. And we have some information that's available for the public there. Since those of you who aren't familiar in the community, the Assessor assesses all the properties in Yolo County. And some of the questions I ask students when they come to visit with me is take a guess of what the values are in Yolo County. And they'll start off with, you know, a million dollars. And I go, a bit more than that, a billion dollars. And the answer is over $33 billion in assessed property values. And so that office does that. And then in the Clerk Recorder's Office, of any property that's being changed and property, we are the official record keepers. And of course, kind of the, you know, the full cycle of life that we do in the Clerk Recorder's Office, birth certificates, death certificates, and marriage licenses, and everything in between. So, and of course, today, I'm here wearing my Elections Official's hat and so excited to share with you why we're here. And for those of you who, I know all of you are familiar with our Youth Empowerment Summit. It's a national award-winning program. And exciting news that we have for West Sacramento, they showed up in force at the last Youth Empowerment Summit. And it was wonderful to have your Superintendent engaged and involved in this process and to have you, I know a number of you were able to make it. And hopefully you'll, we have a flyer as well that is in English and Spanish that will save the date for our next Youth Empowerment Summit. We've partnered with UC Davis and we are going to have the location reserved. And we've already got it scheduled for September 29th. So please put it on your calendar. And we've got flyers there and you can see the flyer up there. It's saved the date of, and our plan is, we've been working with folks in the education community that have told us that it's on a Friday, so then if it's, if we can pick up students at 8:30 and let them leave our spot by 2:30, we can have them back in time. So it's during the school day. And just as a context for the community, we've had over 20 local elected officials show up to have conversations with students about topics they care about. And so today, we get to have an award. And I'd like to be able to have Maria Coronel, she is my outreach specialist who's here today, to acknowledge a couple of, not only your school that had the highest percentage turnout at the Youth Empowerment Summit last fall, but also, actually it was last spring, and we're switching it to the fall season this coming year, because we've heard from educators that the fall works better. So they've told us, no, the fall is a much better time to keep students engaged and help them launch into, you know, the school year. So we're going to do it for the fall this coming year. And we are happy, and Maria, would you, maybe, she may need help getting this over. As you can see, we have a very big check that we have here. And it's, it's a check, right? It's a, it's a visual that we're going to bring here. Thank you so much for helping this. But as you can see, so, so it's made out to Washington Middle, Middle College High School. It's a check for $2,000. Woo-hoo! And that's a reflection, and I know we have the principal here, and I think that's Rachel Lane, are you here? Rachel, come on up. Love to have, actually, I would love to have a picture with all the board coming down and celebrating as yes. And for the community to know what we've done here is, we wanted to incentivize a good turnout. We also have an award for the teacher. Is the teacher, is he, has he?
I was informed that Mr. Marks is not here today. However, I do want to say, let's get it started from the beginning. We appreciate the support of the District Superintendent as well as all principals, but especially Ms. Lane, who is here. She's a champion of democracy, not only because she makes sure that her students become aware of the importance of civic engagement, but also because she supports youth voter registration drives throughout the school year. We recently were on campus, and that was the school with the most students registered during these two-week drive. So I have to acknowledge that. I also want to say that the teacher, Mr. Marks, although he's not here, was the teacher countywide who referred and encouraged the most students to attend or yes 2022. So it does take a village, and this school is a great example of it. So thank you.
Absolutely. So we'll take, I'll join you for the picture, hold on, we'll do it as a group.
All right, everyone, on three. One, two, three. Then one more, two more, one, two, three. Perfect.
So one of the things we want to encourage, and the check is going to be made out to the school district, so you can forward it on to the school. And we want to encourage the school, and I know with the leadership of Principal Lane, this is, this will happen, because you can already see amazing leadership. So this check that we have right here will be to encourage continued civic engagement, whether it's voter registration, some schools have talked about doing some environmental work on campus. This is the opportunity to engage our young people and have them lead and really doing it at the school level. And this wouldn't be possible without your leadership and support. We, I know Dr. Hildreth and I have talked about getting together and having coffee and making some plans for the Youth Empowerment Summit in this coming fall. But we're so proud of the work that's been done here in West Sacramento. In fact, we just got a pledge to support it from the city, to continue to get that support. So things are happening in West Sacramento. I got to give you all some credit. West Sacramento is really knocking it out of the park. So congratulations on this wonderful celebration moment and looking forward to continue to work with all of you as we move forward to empower our young people. So do you all have any questions for me?
Any questions? You have a comment?
No, just a comment. Every year you come and make your yes presentation to us, and every year it seems to get bigger and bigger and bigger in this program. I just want to say thank you for all your hard work and your staff as well for being so encouraging and promoting democracy. So thank you again, Jesse. Really appreciate it.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
We are, we're so lucky to have you and to participate and see the students and their excitement around the work that you're doing and all of the folks that you bring in. How many electeds did you say you have?
Over 20. We've had consistently over 20 local electeds. They can span from a school board member to city council to Board of Supervisors. It runs, we even had a state senator and an assembly member show up last time, so, and actually, they're contacting me, hey, can we show up? So that's always nice, when you have others that want to participate, because they see how special this, this engagement is that we're having. And I do, would like to see if we could maybe find a way to have students from West Sacramento participate, because now with Zoom and that possibility and the planning. Because it's important for our young people to engage in our planning process, so we can work and coordinate with the city and the school district on getting more connectedness in terms of the planning effort. Because, you know, it does take a village, as Maria had shared with you. And, you know, again, there's some wonderful things that I'm so proud of, of what we're doing in Yolo County, because we are unique. I talk to my colleagues across the state, and they keep saying, what are you doing again? Because they don't have anything like this. And, and it keeps growing. So to, our goal is actually to have 200 students this coming year. So it's going to continue to grow. And now that the university has locked in the place for us, you know, we locked it in during the fall of last year. So we got it early, and they've been very supportive. I just, I give props to the campus and the chancellor. In fact, chancellor came and spoke last time. So the university's been incredibly supportive, and it's such a great opportunity for our students to actually see the campus too. So that's always a plus as well. I don't want to take, I know you're very busy and you have a full agenda. I just want to thank you again for this celebration, this time with you, and look forward to seeing you. Hopefully you have it all on your calendar, and I'm sure your other trustees will hopefully be able to join us as well come September. Sound good?
Thank you, it sounds great. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. And Dr. Hildreth, let me hand you.
Perfect. Okay, thank you again for being here and giving your evening to us. We now are recognizing our River City High School winter and spring sports teams. And we have our Assistant Principal, Amar Nalik. And we also have Christine Dornan, our Athletic Director for River City High School. Come on up.
Well, I'm glad that, or I'm very appreciative that you guys invited us here for your celebrations. And it's exciting to be here. Good evening, Board President Kirby Gonzalez, trustees and Superintendent Hildreth, and actually, everybody that's here. I didn't realize there'd be so many more people, so we appreciate all of you. Just want to make sure I include everybody. I want to thank you so much for giving us this opportunity to give updates and highlights for River City's awesome athletics program. And I'd like to just reintroduce myself. I am Christie Dornan, AD for River City.
And Amar Nalik, Assistant Principal in charge of athletics.
So really, I'm going to talk about really quick, and I know as much as you guys would love to hear me wax eloquent, I do have a time limit for how long I can do that. So I will, it starts getting really bad after about five minutes. So I want to make sure that I do highlight fall as well, because we didn't get an opportunity to do so, but I will do it, you know, fairly quickly. So to be a part of athletics, we have a culture there that we indoctrinate our kids, you know, into what we want, but actually, they embrace it wholeheartedly. We honor the game by something called roots. We, we teach them to honor the rules, honor the opponents, honor the officials, honor the teammates, and honor oneself. And that's a culture that we are all collectively embracing this year. As a coaching staff, we also emphasize the Elm Tree of Mastery, which is, we're going to want effort, we're going to expect that you learn, but we also want to teach you what it's like to bounce back from mistakes, because those are the things that we need the most in our kids, is to learn from that adversity. With that focus, we would like to lead actually tonight with some of our academic accomplishments first, because we are Raider student athletes first before we are anything else. So with that said, fall overall GPAs, I would like to celebrate that. We came in this year overall for all our athletics at a 3.601, which is up from the prior year at a 3.51. So pretty impressive. Our winner overall GPA for all of our athletes was 3.31, which was up from the prior year of a 3.18, actually. So very good. And spring, a little harder, because we're not done yet, but I just took a snapshot in time. And right now, we're currently at about a 3.58. And last year at the end, for full disclosure, it was a 3.43. So I feel like we're still going to finish strong. So I was very impressed. With almost 800 athletes in our program, you know that this kind of success doesn't just come from, you know, one or two people. This is our, with the support of our entire educational community. That's our teachers, that's our parents, that are our administrators, our school staff, our coaches, all working together to support our student athletes. Couldn't do it without them. And then, of course, our students doing the actual hard work in the classroom that we're, we're going to take credit for. All right. And as much as I would love to sit here and highlight every single coach and every single athlete that has done amazing things this year, and trust me, they have, you guys don't want to hear me talk that long. So I'm going to, I'm going to just hit the highlights, but I want you to know that there's not one kid that played for us, almost 800 of them, that didn't put their heart and soul into what they did this year. First, I want to do a little honorable mention. We did have a rugby program at River City High School for the, for three years. We did see that, not at our school this year, but we did have a student, Katie Hansen, get accepted to Dartmouth University to play rugby full ride. So we, I'd like to mention her here, so. I know, Dartmouth. Our water polo team this year, both the girls and boys made playoffs, made playoffs, and they came out strong with boys second in league and girls third in league. Girls tennis, Metro League champs, Metro League champs. I know Coach Dave really knocks it out of the park with his kids, and they do an overall tremendous job. He had a 21-win, three-loss season. So yes, it's pretty good. Our cross-country team came in second in league. We sent a runner to state, Ryan Martin. Just to kind of give you an idea of what that means, he was obviously first in our league, seventh in our whole Division One, 21st in our section, and 86th in the United States. So he signed a D1 offer with Sac State, and will be going there in the fall. Second, we're going to move on to winter. We have wrestling, placed second in league. We sent two kids for the first time in a long time, Noah Arnold and Julian Ivanstof, to the state tournament, where Noah actually placed in the top 12. So that's in the state. That was actually pretty impressive. Just so you guys know, she also signed with Simpson College in Iowa, and will be matriculating there in the fall as well to wrestle. Boys soccer, placed second in league, got a playoff spot. Girls soccer, second in league with a playoff spot. But we also had Drew Novaeus, our goalie, she signed with San Jose State. So she's going to be a Spartan next year and play soccer. So that's pretty impressive. In the spring, our girls took first in league. So, and that's, that's, that's a long time coming. Boys did very well, well. When we had one young lady, Brianna Gao, took first in the 200 free and third in the 100 fly in the finals, which is pretty impressive. Softball, second in league. I would love to tell you how they're going to do in playoffs, but that doesn't get done until Saturday, so. So we're just going to, we're going to cheer them on. But just as importantly, they are sending three of their softball girls off to college. Isabella Pena signed with Cal Poly San Luis Obispo. We'll see her there in the fall. Kayla Macias at UC Davis, we're going to see her in the fall there as well, playing softball. Jasmine Achoa signed with Wisconsin Lutheran University. She'll be going to that cold state in the fall. So we wish her all the best. Baseball took second in league. They beat Elk Grove in the first round. That was actually probably one of the most exciting games I've attended. It was amazing. They held them off until the very end. Unfortunately, as of about 20 minutes ago, Principal Billingsley did send me a text, and we did fall to Lincoln Stockton in the second round. We held them off till the sixth inning, and then we took the loss at 5-2. So, and just, it's still, I love sending her down there, because that's her alma mater in case you guys didn't know. So I figure she was a house divided, you know? So, but yes, unfortunately, but the boys did amazingly well. They're a tremendous team. Shout-outs to all of them. Track is currently in it to win it still. They took first in league for boys, second in league for girls. They broke in multiple school records this year. We've kept the school record since 1987. Ryan Martin broke the 800-meter record, 1:55, so 1 minute 55 seconds. He's ranked 54th in the United States. Brooke Wyatt broke, as a sophomore, broke the 100-meter and 300-meter hurdle, record for the, the girls for our school. And Ms. Jaleah Davis R., Jr., she broke the 100-meter, the 200-meter, and the 400-meter record for our school, and she is currently ranked 50th in the United States. Yeah, don't even get me started on, I'm telling you, our athletes are amazing. Boys tennis placed second in league, and you know they're showing strong right now in our division playoffs. Co-ed golf, for the first time, secured a playoff spot, and they did phenomenally well. I was very proud of them. Speaking for the entire athletics department, we would like to first thank the district and the board for all of your faith and all of your support in what we're doing and in our mission and our vision for the athletics department. I mean, without you guys and what you guys believe in us and, and support us, then we wouldn't, we wouldn't be able to do what we do right now. We would like to thank Dr. Burns for his guidance in developing a solid foundation for this program. We'd like to thank Principal Billingsley for her leadership, unwavering support and faith in our student athletes and staff. Our coaching staff, I mean, if I could give them the world, I would, but I can't. But they, they put in tireless hours, effort, grit, tenacity, leading with a collective vision this year. And that's something I can tell you was very important for me as my first years, to get us all on the same page. Parents, goodness, without you guys, thank you so much. We wouldn't have these children to coach. You put your faith and trust in us with the development and hearts of your children, and I can't thank you enough. And the athletes, we're all their number one fan, and we should, hopefully they know that. Every person in this room, I mean, we're there for them, cheering them on. And lastly, and personally, I would like to thank Mr. Amar Nalik for his solid partnership in all things athletic. Whether it was a high or a low, he was always by my side. So I appreciate him very much.
Thank you, Christie. Can we please give her another hand? She's really. Just like to add that being an administrator in charge of athletics at River City High School is one of the easiest jobs in the world, just all due to extremely hard work by Christie Dornan here. Her first year, I mean, I, I can't explain to you folks how intense being an athletic director is at the high school size of River City. With all the intricate and delicate situations that occur on daily basis, ensuring that all, every student is cleared, ensuring that all the bylaws are followed, that every coach is cleared, every assistant coach, and then, of course, any discipline that may come up for any athlete, she's our, she's on the front lines, and that front line rarely gets broken to the lines where the administrators have to come in and handle situations. So I'm grateful to have her as an athletic director. She's incredibly hard worker. She's humble and modest, which only helps her to be even more respected by everybody involved in athletics, not just at River City High School, but in our league as well. When Christie speaks, everybody listens. And I just want, I just want to, I just want to close, like I said, I'm, it's, my job is very easy because of Christie, and I appreciate you. Our students that form, that she's able to form really beneficial relationships, appreciate you, coaches appreciate you, and you are an asset to River City High School, a huge asset.
Did y'all have any questions or comments?
Looks like we do. Yes, Trustee Pazadi.
It's both, you know, a comment and then a question. Thank you for bringing this to us and telling us about our wonderful student athletes. One of the things that I've really always kind of advocated for and kind of made the argument is that athletics is a pathway to college. It is a, and it's often forgotten, you know, you listen to what our GPAs of our students and athletes are, right? They're students first, athletes second. But by and large, every single one of them are on the honor roll or above, right? Like, they are killing it academically.
Absolutely.
So with that, I just wanted to say thank you for bringing this. I love hearing how, you know, how great our kids are and what they're doing. I have some bias towards wrestling, and, and I will just say, not only did they take second in league, they won the district tournament. And they had 10 kids in finals, 14 boys and six girls qualified for regionals, three girls and eight boys qualified for masters, and one boy and one girl goes state. So that was something, you know, I, I thought was pretty outstanding when I heard all about that. And this was the first time that we had a boy qualify for state in 12 years. So that, our girls, they knock it out of the park every year, and they qualify for state. But this was the first time one of our boys. So our wrestling program really kind of upped the ante this year, and I really appreciate that. And, and I love hearing about all of our athletes and what they've done. So the only question is, is maybe after, I guess, every season, can we bring the students to a board meeting, the athletes, and have certificates presented, so we have an opportunity? That would be, I would love that. Thanks.
Well, it's different to see you with your hair down.
Well, it's different to see you with your hair down.
Yes.
I didn't even recognize you.
I got dressed up for y'all.
But no, it really is a great accomplishment to see all the work that you all have been doing for so many years. I've seen you out there when I've been with the West Sac, with the little leagues that we have and seeing your dedication to not just the high school, but also the youth in the community. And it's very much appreciated and it doesn't go unnoticed. So thank you so much for all that you do. You guys are absolutely wonderful and just keep it up because our kids really do love sports and so does the community. So, job.
I agree. Thank you so much for giving your evening. I know it's one of the busiest months to be in education, so thank you for being here and for sharing all of these incredible statistics, all you do for kids day in and day out. You are fast, even when it's on one of those little wheely things and you're like... Moving all through, checking on kids. So just thank you for all you do and as you said, to all of the coaches as well for dedicating their time because this is a huge reason why our kids do come to school. For some of our kids, this is their most critical connection to the school is through this. And then of course, the academics come from there. So thank you so much and you are appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, and that takes us to our recognition of River City High School Student and Teacher Awardees from the 22nd Annual Chalk It Up High School Self-Portrait Show. The one and only Kristi Jordan, the Executive Director of Chalk It Up.
Hi, thank you so much, Board President Kirby Gonzalez, Trustees, Superintendent Hildreth, Cabinet. I am a Washington Unified School District employee, but today I'm here with my other life's work, which is Executive Director of Chalk It Up to Sacramento, arts nonprofit that's been around. This is our 33rd year and we give out grants to schools. We hold the best festival in town that remains free and family-friendly. 33 years in, the last of the free festivals in Sacramento. That's point of pride. I love hearing about your student athletes. Athletes have so many opportunities to compete. Artists do not have opportunities to show their strengths outside of their class. And that's why 22 years ago, the High School Self-Portrait Show was started. And we invite high school art teachers from around the region to assign a self-portrait project and then pick their top works from their class and admit it to this juried show. The jury is art teachers and local artists, graphic artists, people from the Sacramento Arts Commission. There's about 12 people that go around and they spend hours and hours reading the artist's statement and looking at their work to determine winners. Our winners receive medals and ribbons and the Best in Show receives a scholarship. And so this year, I was so pleased to see River City High School once again participating. I talked to Patrick Connell and I think it's been since 2018 the last time River City participated, so I was thrilled about that. We had 142 student submissions from 21 area high schools, Granite Bay, Davis, Elk Grove, Roseville, and everywhere in between. And of the 142 student submissions, nine of them were award winners. There was the Best in Show, first, second, third place, and five Best in Medium. And of those nine awards, two were River City High School students. I know, I know. So I'm so stoked because this show gives these students a chance to do what athletes get to do, which is kind of compete and see what their peers are doing and where they rank amongst their peers. So first of all, I would like to thank the art teachers for all they do. We love art teachers at Chalk It Up. That's why we give grant money. What, what? So I've got Eric Kogler, Pico Van Hutre. But I also need to name the other art teachers who submitted artwork and that is Patrick Connell, Christiana Pangelenen, and Adrian Vidalis. So we're so appreciative of all of those teachers. These teachers got their students' work, got in their car, and drove to meet me downtown at a gallery after work and I appreciate that extra time. So thank you so much. But the reason we're here are these award-winning student artists. So I would like to introduce them now. We've got Benjamin Hefner. Benjamin came in Best in Medium for ceramics with his piece called Fragmented. And it's ceramic with gouache and digital photography. So he made, do you want to describe it or do you want me to tell? He made rings and then took a picture of the rings on his hands and that is his self-portrait. And you are welcome to speak about it or, but you don't have to, whatever you're comfortable with. But thank you for that. Ceramics needs money. Okay. They do. It costs a lot. They're recycling clay. Okay. And then third place overall, again, out of 142 pieces, these students. And this is Brooke White and their piece is called Eyes of the Beholder in colored pencil. And Brooke, would you show your piece? I know, I know. It's really, it's really stunning. It's really stunning. So on behalf of Chalk It Up and the Sacramento artist community, we want to congratulate the teachers, congratulate these amazing students, and hopefully we see your work next year too. And then lastly, I would just like to thank Washington Unified for the investment in VAPA. Thank you.
Scored at 10,000.
Okay, thank you so much. And we learned as we were walking up that Quinn, right, Quinn? That you're also Executive Director of the Yearbook, is that correct? And we heard about your hurdling also as you were, yep. Well done. Thank you for being here and and for your family being here as well this evening and sticking it out with us. We really appreciate you. Okay, that takes us now to our next star, which is our Student Board Member Report, Annabelle Camacho from Washington Middle College High School. You can take it away now. It's all yours.
Hi. Hi, I'm Annabelle Camacho. Have you heard? From Wash, I'm a junior at Washington Middle College High School and I'll be doing the Student Board Report today. At Riverbank, they kicked off CAS assessments on April 21st with music banners and cheers for their third graders who will be taking the CAS testing for the first time this year. The admin encouraged the students to do a wonderful job. In the top right, you can see the schoolyard rap came to Riverbank to educate and entertain the fourth and eighth graders. In the bottom center, we see Jonathan Pinoloza from Riverbank's SLP and he received honors at the YCOE SEOPA's CAC Awards on May 8th, 2023. And in the bottom right, we see Riverbank is preparing for their spring festival on May 19th and all are invited to attend. Elkhorn Village is celebrating, spent the week celebrating their teachers and staff and they thanked their staff and teachers for all they do for the students. They had the Star Treatment this week. At Southport Elementary, they wanted to say thank you to their teachers, staff, and parents for a great year. Let's continue to have fun. At Stonegate Elementary, the first graders spent an hour of code. They had Teacher Appreciation Week. They also had the band, beginning, intermediate, and concert, have a Something Old and Something New Concert. The Explorer came to visit their first grade classrooms and filled them with lots of science-related items for the kids to explore. The Kindergarteners had the butterfly lifecycle end and they released the butterflies into the wild. The third graders had a Pioneer Day walking field trip and the students took notes on plants and animals and how, determined how they would have been useful to pioneers and local Native Americans. Westmore Oaks Elementary, their third graders, third grade rising readers received awards this year for their year-long present participation in the program. And thank you to River City High School tutors for helping them. The FOR XA Dance Academy has been, Westmore Oaks practicing with all their Kinder K through five students for their performance tomorrow at the WMO. That will be taking place from 5:00 to 6:30 in the quad. And the WMO recognizes and thanks employees who were honored at the Employee Recognition Award Ceremony on May 3rd. Westfield Elementary would like to thank the West Sacramento Rotary Club for all their support this year. They're able to provide so many things for their students and staff and they probably could not have done it without them, so thank you to Rotary. They celebrated an amazing teachers and staff this week and they appreciate everything they do. They had their first annual eighth grade versus teacher and staff kickball game. It's a close game, but the teachers and staff won eight to seven. The whole school came out to watch. They had a blast. The Washington Unified Virtual Academies traits this May was honesty and integrity. They had such an amazing week last week with their third through eighth graders. They came to campus each day from 8:30 to noon for CAS testing and had many activities. They celebrated their teachers with a week-long celebration from Memories on Monday to Wild Flowers on Wednesday and Thankful Notes on Thursday. Some events from their campus last week was the River City Thespin put on a Productions Storybook and Chapter Book Theater. They had many team-building activities and on Friday, they celebrated with Field Day Stations, a nonfiction books to take home, and a pizza and ice cream party. Evergreen Elementary Opportunity wanted to thank the Green Go, Green Light Go Outside and their students got to go to Pipe Works to go climbing and learn valuable skills around goal-setting, communication, teamwork, and more. They wanted to thank John and Renee and the GLGO mentors. Their students successfully completed CAS testing. Great job to students and thank you to Mr. C. for your diligence in testing. They also wanted to thank Secretary Ms. Stephanie for the, she took their students to, they did a rock painting project this winter. Washington Adult School wanted to congratulate, or wanted to recognize the students that have completed the Spanish DED and congratulate students and thank you to Mr. Jose for getting their students prepared to be successful. Great work to all of their students and staff for the engaging and rigorous learning happening in their ELL classes under Ms. Jennifer's guidance around professional learning community. We have seen an uptick in attendance in May and April and May as a result. Yellow High School, they wanted to say thank you to Assistant Superintendent Stovall for, Stovall? Okay, for a meeting with their student leaders last week to discuss a number of topics like handball, transportation, facilities, and more. They are grateful for your support and all of their, all of their district leader's support for empowering their students and their voices. They look forward to hosting an amazing WSD Board of Trustees next Friday on May 19th. And congratulations to all their students in Grade 11 on their hard work in completing CAS testing. And thank you to Mr. Miller and Mr. Parker for all their work around testing. They celebrated student engagement and positive student behavior and attendance and hard work around testing with a school-wide nacho bar, thanks to Ms. Diana, and a celebration of Kona Ice and a pizza party from Mr. Miller. They also have an amazing project boutique created by their staff and community as a place for students to get clothing, gifts, and necessities from donations they have received. Students are loving it and even volunteering to organize the boutique. They also organized a great rock painting project and floral decorations during lunch this week. Washington Middle College High School, my high school. Students enjoyed the end-of-the-year college visits to UC Davis, UC Santa Cruz, Chico State, Sacramento State, and Sacramento City College. The avid seniors are gearing up for college by planning out their fall schedules and getting ready for finals this week at Sacramento City College with Snack and Study Day. And the Cultural, Culture Club celebrated Asian Pacific Month. And River City High School wanted to say thank you to their teachers who helped with their Raiders' rise to reach their goals. They're also celebrating Ms. Garcia during Mental Health Awareness Month and they wanted to say and show their appreciation for their cafeteria heroes and thank you for all they do, preparing healthy meals with a smile. You're all truly outstanding. Thank you for listening.
Okay, thank you so much for your report. And as always, you are welcome to stay and give input on any of the items you'd like. And if you'd like to leave, you may do that as well. But you're always welcome. All right, and now we have our reports. So first is WSTA President Knapp.
My phone locked on me. All right, there we go. Sorry, I just want to say for the record that my Toyota Highlander has presets, so I don't have to do this every single time I get in the car. All right, sorry. All right. I watched the last board meeting. Sorry to disappoint, but the more overweight and less handsome leader of WSTA is here to present to you today. Thank you so much for the time tonight. It's good to see you all. I don't know why. I mean, I see you all the time, but it feels like it's been a little longer than normal and I'm actually happy to see you. So first of all, I want to say I'm so excited to see our talented high school students in both the arts and in athletics. And thank you for honoring the arts tonight because I think that was, by Kristi Jordan, such a good point that we, we celebrate the whole child in West Sacramento and sometimes we forget about those creative children who are doing amazing things. And so I want to honor Benjamin Hefner and Brooke White for their amazing work. As a, personally as a musician and a photographer, it was super exciting to see what they were doing and let's celebrate that. I'm also super excited about the athletics program. I mean, the scuttlebutt around all the campuses right now is about what's going on in winter and spring sports and how successful we've been. So I want to give a shout out to Dornan and all the student athletes. You know, the secret that we don't talk about much is that West Sacramento often loses our amazing students to Jesuit, McClatchy, and other schools. And when we hear about successes like this in arts and athletics, it means that we're sending a message to our community that we are valuing athletics. are valuing athletics and arts and that they can stay here to get what they need to go on in the future. So absolutely want to celebrate that. I also want to just thank Sarah, Kobe, and Virginia for always being accessible. And it would be great to have more opportunities to dress the entire school board. Because of late, there hasn't been the entire school board at the school board meetings. And that's concerning because our school board represents our students. I'm going to talk about something I've talked about since September and you're going to see more members talking about it. And I know you've heard about it in emails, and that's class size. You know, we come to these meetings all the time and we talk about doing what's best for students. And I understand that we have numbers of enrollment and we have to meet the needs of those numbers. However, we are not an expansive district. I grew up in a district where I had to drive 45 miles to get to my school. I got on the bus and went 45 miles. Our schools are close together. And having one site with 18 students in a classroom in kindergarten and another site one mile away that has 26 students is just not us doing our job in leadership. We have the opportunity to create balanced class sizes. And if, we all know, we've seen the research, everybody in this room knows that student-to-teacher ratio is the number one, the number one way to make sure that students are learning in classrooms, keeping that student-to-teacher ratio low. In the past, WUSD has had, has had a practice of overflowing after 26. Our class size average in our contract in our district is 24 students in kindergarten. I believe it's 28 in three through, sorry, four through eight. And we've had, we've decided that once we exceeded the average after two weeks of school, we would overflow to a site that's nearby, less than one and a half miles away, so that we could keep the classes at the class size average. If our commitment truly is to doing what's right by students, every single teacher in the district will tell you that keeping the class size small is the best way to do that. A district has priority programs such as Avid and small reading groups. I can tell you right now, our teachers aren't going to be able to do either if class sizes exceed the averages. We're not going to be able to follow our priorities, which I will tell you all of our teachers believe in. But it's not, you can't have a small group of eight students in a kindergarten classroom. That's not a small group anymore. You can't meet their needs. Class size is critical to my members. In every survey over the last five years of my members, class size has been the number one priority. Our leadership has done our due diligence to talk to our members about the realities of class size. And the truth is that a reduction of class size of one student is equivalent to a 5% raise. And our teachers understand that it's cost prohibitive to reduce class size. And we believe in being team players and working with the district on this. However, our teachers committing to not reducing class sizes is not being met on the policy end when the district decides to increase class sizes rather than overflow to a less impactful nearby site. So our teachers are deciding, okay, we understand the district can't afford to reduce class sizes, but the district is not doing their part to reciprocate in making the easy decision to overflow to a nearby school. And this is something our parents want too. We're getting close to the new year. We have the opportunity to go back to the old model where we overflow after overages beyond two weeks. I urge the board to urge the district to return to that model so that we can serve our students with appropriate student-to-teacher ratios and continue the success of WUSD teachers serving our students. I want to congratulate WUSD and community partners on continuing to work together on the community school model. We've continued to have conversations on a difficult topic which none of us have experienced. And we are creating systems that are going to allow for community schools to represent all members of our community. There have been problems early on with the institution of creating community schools, but that is not to be unexpected because we've never done this before. All partners should have patience and grace as we go into this process and WSTA is no different. And I'm glad to celebrate that at our last steering committee meeting, we started to institute programmatic changes that will allow for all community partners to be present at every step of the process. So we're looking forward to continuing with that. I just wanted to shout out, I have a really good working relationship with Kamalji Panu. And he and I have accomplished a lot together this year. And a couple of times afterwards, he's all, hey, where's my love? Because I've given love to Monique and I've given love to some other folks. But you know, I'm going to tell you a little secret. It's never good to like, celebrate HR. That's a no-no. But honestly, I have a great working relationship with Kamalji and I want to celebrate that. And I am looking forward to continue working with him. So, shh. Okay, buddy, I said that. A couple more items before I stop. I think WUSD has made a wise decision on putting permanent substitutes or long-term substitutes at every site. And I urge you to continue this process next year. This needs to come in tandem with increasing substitute wages so that we can compete with Sac City and Elk Grove. But that being said, I think it's resolved a lot of problems having site substitutes. I would urge at least four at the high school, two at high-impact elementary schools, and at least one at low-impact elementary schools at every site. And I'm hoping that the board decides to continue that in their budgetary decisions. The last thing is a little complicated because this is not a CTA message I'm sending to the school board. This is a message for our community. Our community partners in preschool in West Sacramento have been dedicated diligent stewards of education. We have preschools like, my goodness, I think it's called Learning Jungle now. It had a name before. We have Mile Preschool. There's several preschools in the district that for 20 years have served our students well and sent them to first grade and kindergarten prepared for school. And I'm so happy with the PK, TK rollout in the state. This is good for our students. But I want to make sure our school board and our city is not going to leave our community partners behind. Because some of our community partners are looking like they're going to get forced into bankruptcy. Because the opportunities that we're giving every student to go into Universal Pre-K is isolating our preschools from being able to have enrollment. And they've served us really well. So my goal is to ask our district to create a partnership. And again, this is not a CTA thing, right? I'm looking outside of the normal boundaries here. But these are people that we all love and have been part of our community. We have to find ways to include our preschool programs so that they don't go insolvent as we create Universal Preschool and TK. They've been here for us all along and I'm hoping we can find ways to partner with them. Because I know the state decided that they were going to pull away from the community partnership part of the rollout. So I'm asking us to do that because we don't forget about the people who've been there for us all along. That's all I have to say tonight. Thank you so much. I hope you all have a wonderful weekend. Good night.
Thank you so much. Next, we have our CSEA report, President Gondara.
Good evening, Superintendent Hildreth, Board President Kirby Gonzalez. I would first like to begin by acknowledging the teachers this week for Teacher Appreciation Week. I want to thank you guys for everything you guys do. It takes a special person to be a teacher. So I would, next, I want to talk about a serious concern we have at Westmore Oaks Elementary. This concern is over a year and a half old and it's still ongoing. We have really serious issues that I think there's a problem on multiple levels. I've personally been involved with this site for a year and a half. This has to do with the parent educators or subs in the classrooms being left alone at this site and other sites. We are experiencing really serious issues, basically a lack of coverage and chronic vacancies. Pairs have also been physically assaulted by students, one while she was pregnant. This parent educator has came back and is on light duty. Another parent educator has left the district as of spring break, so the light-duty parent educator is filling into her classroom. The parent who has been placed in the RSP Elementary classroom has to forego giving IEP minutes to students to go help another classroom with bathroom. This should not be happening. These concerns have been brought up to site administration with no response, no reply. I have a real concern of this ongoing situation and the safety, health, for all. We need to address the real issue with why is there so many vacancies? Why are so many staff members in the parent educator classification leaving or not applying? I think that's something we need to look at more at this district and try to figure out why this is happening. I also think we need to set up parent educators successfully and having them in a central department where that department, where special services knows their work, not a site administrator, but special services. I think with some CSEA conversation, I think we can, you know, once in a while, we have good ideas. And then the next thing I want to bring up is the paper I gave to you guys. So my concern again is, on 4/27, I brought up to all of you up here, and I believe the two missing ones, about the reclassifications and how is it okay for my members, you're talking to a labor leader, how is it okay for my members to get a new job description that they have to follow as of 4/27, but we are not going to compensate them till 7/1? This data here was provided by Human Resources. And you guys can all see the board approval date. There is only three that were approved before 7/1. So I know the, I know Human Resources is stuck on the 7/1 date. But the data shows we have not completed a reclass before the 7/1. And just for transparency, you'll see Administrative Secretary II position that was board-approved on 6/23. But that was a year and a half in the making. You guys all remember that reclass. So it's not like it was two or three months and we finalized it. And then for transparency, you'll see the last health clerk on this first page, 5/24. Well, their calendar ends on the last day of school, so you wouldn't really reclass them. And they would start obviously on 7 when they returned back in August. So again, my concern is, I brought this up to all of you on 4/27. Not a text, what's going on, not a phone call, what's going on. And furthermore, I had a relations meeting on Tuesday. If I didn't bring it up in the relations meeting, it wasn't on the agenda and wouldn't have got brought up. This is concerning to me. This is showing Riverview 168 that maybe we should just drag out the reclass process so my members don't have to work for free till 7/1. That's what, that's what the district is telling us. That instead of doing a good job working together, Human Resources and CSEA, we're going to punish your members and have them work for free because we settled before 7/1. I don't understand it. I'm, again, I, I don't get it. Maybe someone can clarify that for me after, later on, but that's this. And, and again, should we tell my accounts payable purchasing technician to quit booking travels? Let's quit booking travel. Let's see how that works. She could start again on, on 7/1. Quit booking them. So that's what the district is telling us. The last thing I want to talk about, or another thing I want to talk about is the community schools. I was in a meeting yesterday and it was a good meeting. And I just want to say, I think us as a district should be putting in place the pieces we need to have that department successful. Dr. Mascarenas needs to be successful. And I think if we don't have a district plan, how are you going to roll out community schools? In conversation, all I heard was, at the meeting, was student support, student resources. Totally agree. And I also in conversation heard that this is a five-year plan. So why don't we take year one and focus on students? Students, students, students. And then we can, in February, once this has been going and we're kind of getting a feel for it, we could start talking the implementation of other programs. And it doesn't have to be the following August. It can be in March, April, May, whenever. But we need a clear plan right now. That way, this program is successful. This is Washington Unified. This is a look on all of us here. And I know we all want this to be successful. But without a plan, we can't work on the impacts and effects and the little things. So I think a plan needs to, bless you, I think a plan needs to, to be implemented. And I think that's all I got for tonight. So you guys have a good evening and see you guys later.
Okay, thank you so much. That now takes us to the public comments portion of our board meeting. Our policy has been, I think, since around January, that we now have emailed public comments that are emailed to us before the board meeting. And our commitment is that we always read those. And, and we have done that. And so for our public comments that are here, here is our disclaimer. As a reminder, at our regular board meeting held on February 9, 2023, the board resolved that written public comments resolved by 3:00 PM on the day of the meeting will be provided to the board but not read out into the record during the meeting. Members of the public may address the board on topics of the board agenda during every meeting. In addition, during regular meetings, the public may also address any topic within the jurisdiction of the board. Please know, the board is listening to your comments, but by law cannot meaningfully respond in this forum to items not on the agenda. The board may limit the total time for public input on any topic to 20 minutes unless it waives the item limit for an item. Individual speakers may be limited to three minutes to comment on any topic. The board respects the right of members of the public to speak regarding matters within its jurisdiction. The board respects the right of members of the public to speak regarding matters within its jurisdiction. However, please recognize that comments regarding students other than the speaker's own children made during a public board meeting may be a violation of students' rights to privacy unless the speaker may be legally liable. If you reference a student's name other than your own students, you may be deemed out of order. Furthermore, it's important for the public to understand that negative or derogatory comments made against district employees or others, even those made in a public board meeting, may be actionable civil defamation. Although the board may not prohibit such comments, board policy allows the public to lodge complaints against the district employees, providing more opportunity to be heard than is allowed under the open meeting law that governs this meeting. Okay, at this point, we have four public comments. Our first one this evening is Erica Martin, and that will be followed by Jessica Donaldson. And again, these are three minutes. Come on up Erica Martin, please.
I love her.
I know too. Thank you. If it's helpful to lower that, you can lower the podium as well.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Erica Martin. I teach second grade at Bridgeway Island. And I've taught kindergarten, second grade, third grade, both in this district and in North Highlands. This is my 19th year as a teacher, and this is the first time I've ever addressed the board, so I'm a little nervous. But this is also the first time that I've ever had 26 students in my classroom. And I felt that it was time for me to speak. I'm I am proud to teach for Washington Unified. I believe passionately in what we stand for. Equity, social justice, educating the whole child, as we heard earlier tonight, breaking down the systemic barriers to education. And I'm I'm proud to be a part of that, and it gives me hope for the future. When I hear you speak and I see my colleagues and admin and people around my sights, it makes me proud of the great things that we're doing here. So I'm here in gratitude, but also a little bit dismayed because our number one strategic goal is success in the early years. And putting 26 students in a kindergarten or first, second, or third grade class that's not setting them up for success. Studies have shown that if students aren't proficient readers by third grade, their academic future will be severely impacted, if not their life. So up until third grade, they're learning how to read and then they're reading to learn. I have, we all teachers of those grade levels have a small window to teach our students to be strong, proficient readers. And with 26 students in my classroom this year, I really felt a difference. My small groups aren't as small. My interventions are frequently disrupted. There's just not enough of me to go around. If there are financial issues that we're trying to solve or enrollment issues that we're trying to solve in this district, I just ask that you please don't do it at the expense of our earliest learners. So please, please continue to ensure success in the early years and keep our class sizes small. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now we have Jessica Donaldson and following her, we will have David Weller.
Good evening. My name is Jessica Donaldson. I'm a second grade teacher at Bridgeway Island as well. Sorry, I get a little nervous talking in front of adults. I'm used to kids. I have two items, actually, I'd like to voice my concerns tonight. First, I am here to voice my concerns on class size to ensure each child is able to receive a quality education and a positive educational experience. I teach one of the classrooms that has 26 students this year. Overcrowding has a direct effect on individualized focus for each student. Teachers are supposed to be able to evaluate students' learning, check for weaknesses and strengths, and ideally prescribe the proper regimen to achieve optimal educational health. However, with a large class size, teachers are not able to spend the same amount of time with each student. Even the best teachers cannot provide all the students with individualized support they need in large class. In my classroom, I do utilize small group instruction as much as possible. This year, having 26 students has increased my small groups from four to five students to seven to eight. That is not optimal learning. Sorry, I'm nervous. A smaller class size can create an interactive collaborative learning community. It can create strong learning relationships between students and their classmates. A smaller class size is one of the very few educational strategies proven to increase learning and narrow the achievement gap. When a class size becomes overcrowded, students are more distracted and disengaged from their learning environment while given fewer opportunities and resources to succeed. While I personally see many negative impacts on class size of 26, another problem is mainstreaming our SDC students into our classrooms. How will we be able to work with our SDC teachers and allowing their students to join general ed classes? If we're at capacity, this is not allowing access to educate all students. By finding a way to not exceed 24 students in a classroom, Washington Unified would be making a needed investment in our students so they can succeed and thrive. My second concern is the safety of us all here at WUSD. As you all know, there has been a huge rise in mass shootings. When will the safety of our schools be looked at? When will teachers be given adequate training or training at all if there was ever an active shooter? We should be prepared with an overview of training activities and expectations. At Bridgeway, sorry, at Bridgeway, we don't even have an adequate PA system. If you're outside on the playground or walking on campus, you can't hear the PA system. Even in my classroom, if we are all engaged in learning, someone will say, oh, I hear them talking and we all have to be super quiet. When will the safety of all the staff and students be considered? So thank you.
Thank you. So now we have David Weller and then following David Weller, we'll have Colin Malik.
So I'm here tonight out of frustration again. I had a different lineup as far as what I wanted to speak about, but I want to talk about some accountability. The role of the board as on the website and in your handout is ensuring accountability to the public, evaluating policies, serving as a judicial and appeals body. How do you do that when there's not anything listed as far as in the policy and procedures? I've asked for that and I've yet to get that. I've done that on multiple occasions. You talk in here as far as the commitment and cultivating healthy relationships, safe empowering environments for every student, staff, family, and community member. Yet you don't. You refer people to attorneys. You guys have spent more on attorneys for my kids than it has as far as for a teacher's salary. That is absolutely ridiculous, ridiculous. That money should go to the teachers to do education, not for the attorneys. They drive fancy cars as it is. They don't need money for that. Other thing is that you also put in here as far as the equity excellence empowerment for every student every day. Not my experience. Evaluating and accountability for the superintendent. Cheryl, I have sent you multiple messages, multiple requests for meetings, and this has been going on. I got my first email from you yesterday that was not an automated message. That's ridiculous. This is ridiculous. You guys need to either work or walk and not send things to attorneys. It's ridiculous. I'm sorry, teachers, for sucking up your money.
Thank you, Mr. Weller. Now we have Colin Malik.
All right, cool. Thanks.
And now you are done.
Look dude, it's three minutes, okay? Come on. And considering we're under the 20, hold on, I haven't started yet. Why are you starting? Hold on, let's start this over.
Don't give him such an easy punchline, Mario.
Thank you, Mario. Always gracious. I would like to ask President Kirby Gonzalez, since there is limited public comments, should I run over? Please extend to me one minute additional. Should I run over? I want to address the people who aren't in the room. Jackie Wong has missed four meetings since January. As a public community member, not on my union hat, and as a teacher, facilitator, taxpayer, and veteran, this is absurd and unacceptable. Alvaro Venegas has missed three meetings since January and was 1.5 hours late to one. Unacceptable. As a veteran, I find this highly disturbing. Why you cannot be somewhere as an elected official? Your diligence and your duty to your service and your community is why you ran and why you chose to sit on this board. How dare you not be here? Unacceptable. I am glad to hear that we are finally moving forward on community schools. Thank you for that and thank you, Dr. Hildreth. To echo sentiments as a public community member, not as a teacher, but yes, I am one. I do wear that hat. I will always come back to the table and say quality first instruction in smaller class sizes is the foundation for extended and beneficial education for our students. Hashtag first five. I love that. I'm a 912, but I love first five. Keep in mind room usage at River City High School. We are growing. We are outgrowing our model. Science teachers specifically do need and require additional support as well as room usage availability. I'm going to ask again for institutionalizing and making student teachers subqual and ready so you have an advanced body and party so you're tactically ready to address substitute deficiencies and shortages. Make your student teachers that come from us from Sac State, UC Davis, National University, make them subqual in August. Make that one of the checkboxes that HR goes through. I want to personally recognize Kobe Pizzotti for thanking and bringing up the wrestling ask. Wrestling has always been a sacred place in my heart. I am the JV boys coach. I try to guest coach and the kids love it. I love getting back on the mat. $5,000 for a spotlight. You know what Iowa and Ohio State wrestling looks like when it is done well. Jason Stope and Francine Harrell have done amazing work and I commend them. First time a boy has gone to state in over 12 plus years. That's incredible. They need pads on the walls and a dedicated wrestling room. There's over 50 plus kids in that room. That program has grown immensely. And wrestling gives to students more discipline as an undervalued and underrepresented sports than any other sport. Every other sport plays. Wrestlers wrestle.
Mr. Malik, I know you asked for more time and I appreciate that. I'm gonna ask though that you email the board with your the rest of your comments or you can speak on another agenda item and fill out a comment. But I'm gonna stick with our policy and our consistency.
Would you take one minute for a COVID response?
Maybe if you can look over this agenda while you're sitting and see if it fits in with an item.
Do you have a recommendation?
But I'm going to. I'm now gonna move on because we do have members of the public here and we do have a lot of presentations to go, but thank you. Okay, so that now takes us to our public hearing. And our first public hearing is for science grades 912 curriculum. This is style education. Mr. Matt Ainsworth, who's our Director of Curriculum Instruction and Professional Learning.
Good evening, President Kirby Gonzalez, Trustees, Superintendent Hildreth and Cabinet. On spring of 2022, the Washington Unified School District River City Science Teachers completed a trial of the style science curriculum and requested to pilot the program for the 2223 school year. In fall of 22, we had three chemistry teachers and one physics teacher pilot style. And spring of 23, we had three biology teachers, three chemistry teachers, and one physics teacher pilot style. At the curriculum council meeting held last week on May 4, the council decided to move forward with a recommendation of the science pilot teachers to approve style science as the district's science curriculum. Adoption will begin in the 2324 school year for a total of six years. Style science is aligned with California Next Generation Science Standards and combines digital and hands-on materials with embedded assessments and a vast array of resources. Staff is requesting tonight that the school board hold a public hearing regarding this proposed adoption. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe we open our public hearing. And I do not have any comments for our public hearing. We have no comments from the board. Our public hearing is closed. And that now takes us to our second public hearing, which is for grades K5, the math curriculum. This is McGraw-Hill Reveal. And again, our Director of Curriculum Instruction, Professional Learning, Mr. Matt Ainsworth.
Good evening again. In the summer of 2022, we had 31 kindergarten through fifth grade teachers selected two math programs to pilot for the school year. The pilot teachers received training, collaborated during workshop time, and weighed the driven the chosen programs benefits before making a recommendation to curriculum council. At curriculum council last week, the council recommended moving forward with the K5 grade math pilot teachers recommendation of McGraw-Hill Reveal Math as the elementary math curriculum beginning next year for a total of eight years. McGraw-Hill Reveal Math provides flexibility and instructional and implementation options to meet the range of learners. Staff is again requesting the school board hold a public hearing tonight regarding this proposed adoption.
Okay, and the public hearing is open. I do not see any public comments. There are no public comments, any board discussion. Okay, the public hearing is closed. Thank you. That's a great public hearing. All right, that now takes us to our information discussion items. This is important. It's our presentation, the Washington Unified School District's Special Education FICMAT Program Review. And our Director of Special Services, Carla Salvo, will be here. And thank you, Dr. Zeman, as well, our interim Assistant Superintendent. Perfect. Thank you.
Good evening, Eric, Kirby Gonzalez, and the Board of Trustees. So today we have kind of a two-parter and I have a special guest, Dr. Carolyn Benno, who will be presenting the FICMAT portion of it first and then I'll take over and share my thoughts and next steps.
What are you saying, that I'm sure? Let's put it down. I think we're, I think we're okay. Good evening. Thank you so much for having me this evening. So I work for FICMAT, which is the Fiscal Crisis Management Assessment Team. You'll be relieved to hear we're not here for fiscal crisis. You invited us in to take a look at your district's special education program, which is really brave, right, to do. And I really want to commend the staff who went through this process and just for being open to outside feedback to make sure you're doing the very best job you can to serve your students in this district. I was previously a Selpa director in Yolo County, so I know the district well and this project was really fun for me. And so tonight we'll just be sharing a couple of the the highlights from the work that we did. So you essentially asked us to come in and look at two different areas. One of them was the staffing of the Special Education Department in the in the central office, which you call special services here in Washington Unified. And then you asked us to look at systems to support what we call in special ed, a free, appropriate public education. So essentially, are students here being served well in terms of their special education program? Is it being done in a legally compliant way? That was what we came in to investigate. So the the approach that we use is we review data and documents from your district and then we come in and talk to staff and we really see how how things are going from their perspective. So we spent a couple of days here in December speaking to people and then we generate the report that you've probably received with our findings and recommendations. I want to emphasize that we use a deficit model. This is very important because you might wonder where are all the positive comments about Washington Unified's program, right? We really focus on the gaps. We don't tell the whole story. And so I just, as a board, I want you to have that understanding. What we what we didn't write in the report that we, you know, was very, very clear in interviews is your staff has a lot of confidence in their new leader. And so I wanna, I wanna give her, you know, a little shout out here because you know, that that was that was loud and clear from every single group that we interviewed. And so it's very clear that you have made a good choice here. So hopefully the recommendations in the report will help her in her work moving the department forward in a positive direction. So that's our approach. And then, as I mentioned, the first thing that we did was look at staffing in the central office. And what we do at FICMAT is we compare you to districts that are like size, so similar enrollment that are unified, since you're unified, and that have a similar UPP, so your unduplicated pupil percentage. So kind of as a proxy for your funding, right? So what we found is that you actually have a little more staff in Washington Unified. And if you can go to the next slide, then they can see. Go one more. Okay, there we go. So these are the districts that are considered similar. Who responded? So at FICMAT, not everyone loves to have their district name published in one of our reports, right? And so not everyone responds when we ask them for information. But what we found is that in terms of administrator or kind of leadership positions in the central office, we found that actually your staffing is a little higher than many districts your size. The average was actually 4.42, but you'll notice that one of the districts had only 2.5. 2.5, which was unusual and kind of an outlier. So that really brought down the average. And in a minute, I'm going to go over some key outcomes and needs for Washington Unified. And so our recommendation was not to reduce staffing. It was actually to hire the unfilled position that you had as the special education coordinator. So the other thing we looked at in your central office special ed department was the administrative support positions. So in that area, you're actually staffed a little lower than similar districts, so about three-quarters of an FTE lower. However, it seems like the staff that are in those positions are adequately meeting the needs of the teachers and the students in this district. So that may change in the future, but at this time, we didn't recommend adding staffing. If you could go to the next slide, please. You'll see that, as I already mentioned, our recommendation was not to reduce staffing. It was to maintain. I will explain the reasons for that in just a minute. And then one other thing we did note is the program specialist job description that the district has been using isn't specific to special ed. You have several program specialists. So our recommendation would be to develop a job description that is specific for special education and then determine in the future whether or not there's an operational advantage to having that position have an administrative credential requirement. Many districts do, some districts don't. But as you can imagine, the director has a heavy load in terms of evaluations, and that would lighten that load. So again, the district should consider that in the future. So if you go to the next slide. So just a few high points regarding your district data. So all of you know that your enrollment is declining, right? However, if you go to the next slide, your special ed enrollment has gone up slightly, so about by 81 students over the last few years. Now, in many districts across the state, we're seeing much higher increases in terms of special education enrollment. So this is actually not maybe an emergency, as you might think, and I'll show you percentage-wise in a minute where you are. But just to kind of give you a big picture of who you're serving, you know, almost 70% of your students in special education are males. And you might think, wow, that's really unusual. It's actually exactly what the state average is. So you're 67%, which is right on the state average. So it's just a data point to monitor, right? We want to know whether you, you know, are having the right students selected for special education. And so that's one data point I suggest you continue to monitor in the future. If you go to the next slide, you'll see a percentage now. So what this looks at is students in kindergarten through grade 12 who are enrolled in the special education program. And we see that your percentage in Washington Unified has gone up over the past few years, currently sits at about 11.11%. So now let's give some context. If you go to the next slide, what we have here is both the Yolo County average as well as the state average, okay? And you sit below both. So I feel really good about this percentage, but it needs to be monitored, right? Because again, you want to make sure you're identifying enough students and the right students for special education. But to me, this percentage is more important than the increasing enrollment. You want to stay somewhat proportional in terms of your special ed enrollment, and this is really good news for your district. You're doing that, which speaks to some of your other systems that you have that are serving students outside of special education. Next slide. So one interesting thing about your district, I know this is kind of small up on the big screen, but we have 14 different categories of disability that you can qualify for special ed under. As in other districts across the state, most of your students have a specific learning disability, which is like dyslexia or something like that, okay? But here in Washington Unified, you have a large increase in the number of students who have autism and qualify that way. And in most districts in the state, that's like the third or fourth category that's largest, and in your district, it's actually second. So you'll see a recommendation in a minute to do some investigation as to why that is. Sometimes families group who have kiddos with similar disabilities that can, you know, parents can move to certain areas. That may be what's going on here. But there may be an over-identification. So there's some work that Carla and her team have to do in that area, just to make sure you're appropriately identifying those kids that have autism. If you go ahead and go to the next slide, as I just mentioned, AUT is autism. We see a 38% increase between that four-year period. Now, you might say some of these percentage increase and decrease are very low or very high, but it's because there's such a small number of kids in those categories. So maybe they went from five students to seven, which is maybe like a 60% increase, but it's not significant because the numbers were so low. So the one that stands out to me, again, is the percentage of students you have with autism in the district. So if you go to the next slide, just a couple other items to share. And again, these are more just things to think about, kind of moving forward as you continue to develop, you know, and refine your multi-tiered system of support. You have a higher proportion of English learners in your special ed program than in general ed, okay? So that may mean that you're over-identifying English learners. So that's an area to look at, okay? It's not a huge difference, but it's enough that I think it's notable. If you go to the next slide, we see, if we look by race, ethnicity, we have more students who are Hispanic or Latino or who are African-American in special ed than the general population. So again, we have some disproportionality there. So we wonder if we're identifying the right students, right? It's possible that you just have more of those students with disabilities in your district, but it means that it's something to pay attention to. If you go to the next slide, we see similarly, we have a higher percentage of students who are socio-economically disadvantaged in special ed than general ed. Again, we would like to see a proportionality, so just something to think about as a district. And then if you go to the next slide, we have our dashboard comparison. And you'll see that, as in many districts across the state, we have kind of lower performance and not as good of outcomes for students with disabilities. And, you know, I really believe here, and this is based on longitudinal studies that have been done, you know, across the United States, is you really need to get more of your students into general education classes and environments, okay? We'll talk about that on the next slide. But, you know, you're not meeting some of the targets for what we call least restrictive environment. So that's the percentage of students that are in general education for a certain percentage of the time. And as you can imagine, that really drives achievement, right? If the students don't have access to the core content teacher who is an expert, I'm a past special ed teacher, okay? I was at Pioneer High School in Woodland, and I taught all the subjects. And I thought I did a really good job, but I wasn't as good as having an algebra teacher, or the student having an algebra teacher and a history teacher and a science teacher, right, as you can imagine. And so I think that as many districts, this is not a Washington Unified problem. This is a problem across the state. But it is going to be working towards how you can get students more access to general education, because I think that will help with a lot of these indicators on the dashboard. If you go to the next slide, we have some key recommendations. There is a really great policy paper that was done by AXA that looks at disproportionality of students who are Latinx, and it kind of gets at the English learner issues as well. I'd advise that you look at that. And then, as I already mentioned, looking at students with autism and just making sure that the assessment best practices are being used. Carla and I have talked about this a lot. I think she has a lot of really good ideas that she's going to share on how to move forward with that. And then if you go to the next slide, another recommendation is to really focus on that least restrictive environment. So the federal target is 80% of the school day that they really want for most kids, not all kids, right? We know that certain students need special day class access for a lot of their school day. And we're not saying you should be a full inclusion district, but it really is going to be important to get more of the kids that access, right? So that continues to be a recommendation. So if you go to the next slide, I just have two more quick things I'm going to comment on. The other part of our study was to look at systems, and you had a different consultant who came in and looked at your multi-tiered system of support. So basically, that's how you support all students with interventions for behavior, academics, and social emotional learning. And I know you've done, I got the opportunity to meet with Matt. I know you're doing some work with what's called universal design for learning, and really want to encourage the use of that strategy and that lens in your district, okay? That's what the 2015 report on one system, which is kind of our gold standard for special ed in the state, really advises. And I'm really excited to hear that work has started here and really want to encourage that to continue. And then one other area, if you go to the next slide, if we think about IEP compliance and kind of some of the legal requirements, Carla and I have had some conversations about how to maximize use of a system you already have, which is called the Special Education Information System. It's an online system to generate these student plans that we write for students in special education. And there's a service tracker feature that can really help with compliance of these minutes that students have of like speech therapy and things like that. So we had a recommendation around that and in some other areas, but that's a key one in this area to kind of improve your student data and make sure that the kids are getting the services that are prescribed for them in their plans. If you can go to the next slide, I guess, would you like me to take questions before you present? Let Carla go. Okay. Thank you.
So Maria, we're going to switch. So to kind of finish the conversation that we started with FICMAT, I'm going to present what the next steps are that I would like to see for the coming year. So, next slide, please. And so how this ties to our strategic priorities is it's our pillar A, and just ensuring that all students are participating in their least restrictive environment and that we're, you know, just being, you know, supporting all students. Next slide. And then where it ties to the strategic plan specifically is opportunity and achievement for every student, eliminating disproportionalsities, ensuring that all students are provided access and opportunity, and the under pillar A, equity-focused teaching and learning. So next slide. But before we jump to like the meat and potatoes, I do want to take a minute to just celebrate the things that our special education department has been doing throughout the year and continues to do. I wish I could spend my entire time up here just celebrating the great things that occur every day. And so I specifically chose four things to put up there, but I do want to just touch upon two really quick, just because I'm so excited to hear this. So our speech therapists, and I think I've mentioned this before, have participated through the Diagnostic Center in a argumentative alternative communication training. So they were able to receive pretty much a year-long or school-year-long training. And so today, they actually concluded it and got their certificates. And I had an opportunity to sit and chat with them. And through that work, we were able to evaluate and determine that 13 of our students now have what they call AAC devices. So that means that now they can functionally communicate with their teachers, their staff, their parents. And so that just gives me all the warm fuzzies. And it's just really because, you know, seven of them went out and did that work. So, and that will continue on, and of course, will continue to provide that support for them. And then the other two things that I just wanted to highlight, one is that we have 34 of our seniors who are identified as students who have IEPs that are graduating, and one of those specifically was accepted to two UC universities. And so that's huge. Most of our kiddos that are, or sorry, young adults that are graduating are also set up to go to city college or trade schools, and that's just with the work of that the case managers at the high school are doing. So I did want to celebrate that because I sometimes think we don't always bring light to those things. So going back to these pictures, the one on the top right is actually our CAC members at Legislation Sharing Day, which occurred last Wednesday. And so they're in this picture, they're with Senator Dodd's fellow. And then they also got a chance to touch base with Senator Aguilar Hury, and actually, one of our members here, or both of them right here now. Yes. So thank you both for going out and advocating for our students. And then with their work, along with some of our other CAC members, we have now been able to form our own district, like CAC parent group. And we sent out some surveys so that way we can gain some more, just better ways to be able to communicate with our parents. So I'm so excited to have paired up with them and the other members. And then we're also in the midst of planning a spring fling to end the school year and just build some community within our special education parents. And then I'm going to kind of go down to the picture of the windows. And this is actually, speaking of inclusive practices and the least restrictive environment, our teacher, our RSP teacher, Ms. Wallace, with, actually, I think she's a third grader, sorry, third grade class, Ms. Yonk, they actually did a co-taught lesson on disability awareness. And so throughout the year, they've done a few different topics. They've done some salmon, but this one specifically, Ms. Wallace was very proud of just the kids' participation. So that's some of the artwork that they had the kids share. And then going back to our CAC members, two of our special education teachers were nominated and awarded. The first one, which is Jonathan Penelozza, who is our SLP, our speech therapist. In this specific picture, he is doing a music circle time that he incorporates speech strategies for our mod severe students. So it's such, and it's in addition to what they receive because he enjoys it, and he has extra instruments, so the kids get to enjoy that and play with it. And then our other teacher that was awarded was Ms. Schrimmsher, who's our Southport K2 SDC teacher. And here, she shared some pictures of how she takes that same, you know, topic of the butter, I can't talk, lesson of a butterfly cycle, but really shares how she adapts that so she can reach the ability of all of her students. And so I just wanted to highlight some of those. And then we also had our school psychologist, Kristy Funning, was awarded through the district as a support staff. So I'm super excited for all of the staff and wish I couldn't, like I said, spend all day here chatting about them. But I will get to what you really want to see, which is what are we going to do with the information that we received from FICMAT? So next slide, please. So I did want to share just kind of what we have been doing in this last year. And so we chose to focus on three things. IEP compliance will be something that you'll always hear me talk about because that's what governs what we do day to day. And so in looking at past IEPs and just knowing what the staff needed, we decided that for IEP compliance, just developing a compliant IEP. And it's, to write an IEP, I've heard from legal trainings, is that you can make up to 1,800 mistakes in an IEP just because there's so many things that our teachers have to do and our specialists that also develop it. So we just wanted to hone in on the very basic things of how to develop it, timelines, ensuring that we're checking, you know, that the students are EL or they're not, or that they needed, or the parent needs interpreter, just so really focusing on those. And then that's something that did come up through FICMAT, which was our service tracker that I think we have heard about from previous staff, is the service tracker. Service tracker is not new to us or special education. It's been around for a long time, and especially more for our other providers like speech therapists, physical therapists, because that's how we collect our MA. That's how we get some reimbursement. And since COVID, it has become a thing for our special education teachers. It just has never been in the format of SAES. And so in this last spring, CDE has come out to say, we are now collecting data from you. And so that's why we have rolled out the request of utilizing the SAES service tracker. So that will continue, and hopefully, we can streamline those areas. The other area that we supported this year was supplementary curriculum, which I know I've come up and chatted about before, and really just working on ensuring that everyone had what they needed. And then the other piece is procedures. And so as we started the school year, just reviewing our educational benefit, and that really looks at how we move students either to more restrictive to less restrictive. And then our other thing that we reviewed this year was our special education manual, which ties right back to our IEP compliance. That was our focus this year. And then to move forward for next year and to tie into FICMAT, so next slide, please. We took the three recommendation areas, which is least restrictive environment. So we will discuss a little bit about MTSS, identification of English learners in special education, and then more compliance. Next slide, please. So in the area of least restrictive environment, something that I share with my staff and any, you know, team that I work with that is developing an IEP or in an IEP meeting is I remind them that all students are general education students first, and they always will be general education students first. Just because they have an IEP, that doesn't change that. Really, all that means is that we're there to support them because they need those supports. And so the next steps are to share more inclusive practices, but this isn't just the work of special education. This is the work of the entire district, just because we need to ensure that we're all keeping that same mind frame for our students. And so And so continuing our work with ed services and in supporting what our MTSS looks like, drilling down more of our SST, and then also just ensuring that we have universal design for all students because we want them to have access to the core curriculum from that content's teacher. The next area that I would like to focus our professional development is district-wide procedures for effective implementation of an IEP plan. So of course, there's the special side of the house where we have to have that compliant IEP. But we also have to follow other guidelines like having a general education teacher there, having all the team members available, having our site administrators being at the table and being able to speak for all students and just ensuring that everyone knows what those procedures are as we move forward. The other area that we would like to focus in on is patterns of strength and weakness. So this work actually already started with our school psychologist. And this is, the patterns of strength and weakness is just a way for them to determine eligibility. And it really boils down for certain categories, not all, the patterns of strength. So what they're really good at in the areas that they need support in. And so what we need to, we would like to focus our professional development is sharing that information with our general education teachers so they understand how to support that student in the classroom and what those accommodations will look like and why it's important for them to be part of that IEP. Next slide, please. In the area of identification of English learners. So I was very curious and looking in our current data, just to kind of analyze after seeing what Carolyn and her team had found. So I started digging a little bit. And what I did see was that, yes, definitely in the area or of the eligibility of autism, it's higher than it's been. But what we also came across was speech and language. But to give a little bit of a kudos to the work the team has done is that we are seeing a decrease. We're currently at 20% versus the 22. So it's not huge, but we are starting to see some of that come down. And so that just says to me that the work that the EL director and her team is doing with supporting the general education with high level strategies for English learners is helping not have the students rise up to have to go into special education. So we're just going to continue with our clear practices and procedures and how to support English language learners across all settings, close partnerships with our general education and our site administrators, and then continuing our collaboration. Next slide. And then, like I said, you'll see this every time, compliance will continue to be a focus for us. And so what we're going to continue our emphasis on is monitoring our data. And that's kind of speaking to more on the backend of what SACE is able to do. And so that is monitoring our identification of students, monitoring how many assessments we're getting. Why are we getting those assessments? Continuing to ensure that the service tracker is not overbearing on time for our teachers and figuring out how we can kind of streamline that. The other piece to that is that right now are, some of our providers are entering data twice just because of the requirements that CDE gave us this year. So we're trying to narrow that down. And then we're going to continue to talk specifically to our special education teachers about the least restrictive environment and having the conversation around push-in versus a pull-out. So push-in, like Carolyn had mentioned before, is staying in the classroom, going into the classroom. And so kudos to Stonegate and Westfield and a couple other sites that are doing a co-teach model. And that's allowing the students to stay in the classroom with those content teachers. And then for our SDC teacher, SDC students that may be not ready for mainstream in that general education, but maybe looking at reverse mainstreaming, meaning general ed students come into the SDC classroom to start helping them adapt and get used to having other peers and making the class a little bit bigger. So those are our next steps. Next slide. And I will leave you with a quote and then answer any questions.
Okay, thank you so much. First, I'm going to ask for a public comment. I don't see any.
No public comments?
So it's our last chance for a public comment right now. Okay, so then we'll come up to board comments and I'm sure we have comments and questions for you. You look like you're ready to go. Rosi Basadi, do you want to go first?
Yeah, sure. I don't know where to begin exactly, but I have a couple of questions as well as comments. We're seeing an increase or maybe an over-identification of minority groups, you know, those in socio-economically disadvantaged groups. I mean, to me, when I see that, it breaks my heart. I hate to see that. We've kind of been here before. We had a FICMAT study done before. And so what happened was when we had, we had this issue before. And we started down the path of trying to change the culture and change the dynamic. And I don't know what happened in the interim. Maybe COVID, you know, maybe a change of, you know, you know, leadership. But what happened was now we're back where we are and I'm a little concerned about. I'm, I would like to know, what are we seeing? Do we have any indication as to why? Do we have any ideas?
So specifically on why we're over-identifying students with autism or EL learners. So I can speak to both. So for our students with autism, in speaking to our school psychologists, you know, they overall are seeing more medical diagnosis of students with autism. And so no, that doesn't mean an automatic, you know, IEP. But there has been nationwide more, they have seen that African-American students and Latinx students are just receiving those diagnosis on the medical side of the house. So that does impact some of the educational part of it. So there's that piece. When we talked about our evaluations, we utilize the rating scales. We utilize a lot of the same evaluations and assessments that the doctors use. So we are using similar assessments so that way we can identify, you know, they truly fall under autism. We did talk about what other things we can bring in. And they also asked, you know, if we're, if we're, maybe we're missing something. So could we have some professional development in just ensuring that what we're looking at, how we're, you know, reviewing it and providing the information to the family is correct? So we are definitely looking into that piece of it. And then for our English language learners, something that came up also in my conversations with different groups is that as a, as a district, as we've heard before, is that our, kind of our dynamics are changing a little bit. We have a lot of newcomers, right? And so that's where the importance of working with our site administrators and our general education teachers on knowing what are those EL strategies to support those newcomers, which we are seeing they're doing. But through the lens of evaluation and identifying students, really the, we shouldn't, as a special education team, see them referred for two to three years because they need to have that core instruction for that, at least that amount of time before we start doing our evaluations. So there is that piece. And of course, there's outliers to everything because as a district, we've also seen that. And then the other piece that came up from our teachers is some of our EL learners are long-term learners. And so identifying again, those patterns of strength and weaknesses to identify, how do we support them in the general education classroom and not have to pull them out?
I'm worried about when you say not, not identify them for two to three years because if they, if they're coming over in high school, two to three years means they're out of our hands, meaning they're out of system. And I would much rather than be identified prior to graduation and prior to the age of 18. It would just, I think.
So there's, there's ed code around the, when we can assess a student who is a second language learner. And as a second language learner, if they have not received that English instruction for at least two years and received interventions during that time, really, we shouldn't be assessing those students because we haven't given them ample time to, to understand and comprehend that language. And so there is pros and cons to that. And I can share stories that we've had students come from other countries this year where there was, parents shared that they had delays and there was medical records. And so we could, you know, we could, you know, look at providing assessments earlier. But again, we don't, if, it's a, it's a fine line in not wanting to over-identify a student who hasn't received English.
I don't want to over-identify. I work with nurses that, you know, help kids with developmental disabilities. So I am acutely aware and almost hyperly aware of some of the struggles that they face. But it's also very important that they're diagnosed before they get due. So that's, that's something that I just want to make sure that we argue. Some of the other questions that I have is we're seeing the process coming down. Or not coming down, but we're seeing identifications coming down. You said we over, what was the terminology? Over-identifying is coming down? Means over-identifying is going down by 20%. I think we're identifying 20% less, correct? Is that a better way of saying?
So I think it was a timing issue. We came in in December when the 21, 22 data was available. We determined a percentage, I think it was 22% at that time. The new data is now available, and I think Carla's saying it's now 20% of students in that group are English learners. So it's not that it came down by 20%. I think it came down by 2%. But it's, it's moving in the right direction, I think, is what she was trying to share. And so it's just a matter of the timing of what data was available when we ran our numbers.
And then one of the final thoughts that I had is that, or thoughts that's kind of been running through the back of my mind. We heard throughout this entire school year about caseload of our sped teachers and how we're not meeting our minutes. We may be meeting our caseload requirements, but we're not meeting our minutes. The question I have is, are we short-staffed? Is that a problem? Are we not meeting our minutes? It comes to the compliance issue, right? Are we, are we being compliant? And from, you know, the accounts that we've heard is that we're not in terms of minutes, but in terms of caseload, we are.
So the, the first FICMAT study, you did have us look at caseload. This one you didn't, but the service tracker, I think, is still, that wasn't one of the scope points for us to assess the caseload numbers. So staffing, it was just central office staffing. So it was specific to the administrative assistants and the administrators. So the service tracker, though, I think that Carla mentioned that she's implementing is still the way that you would be able to run reports and assess whether or not minutes are being met for students or not. So essentially, if all of the teachers put in all of the minutes that they're providing for students, which the service tracker allows you to do, Carla and her team can then run a report and determine if you're underserving or overserving students. So I think that would be important data for her to have to determine if you're over or understaffed.
So if you're maxed out throughout the day, meeting your contract minutes, how do you fill out a report? How do you have time to fill out minutes in a tracker?
I think there's an app. It's, it's pretty quick. I mean, I think teachers all over the state do it. And I do understand your point, but I think it's pretty much a standard, an industry standard now that, that schools are having their staff use these. So I appreciate that it's an extra thing that staff have to do. But I do think it's a best practice so that you can make sure that, that the minutes are being delivered.
I don't, don't disagree that it might be a best practice or that it's absolutely necessary. I agree that it is. But it should be accounted for in their day is what I'm kind of saying.
To add a little bit more to that is that data collection is not new to our, to our teachers. So they, so they've always collected data, whether it's attendance, whether it's data on their IEPs. So it's just asking them to do it in a different format. Before they would fill it out in either Aries or they'd fill it out on a paper. Now they're just having to do it on a computer.
Agreed. And I'm not suggesting that that is any more of a time suck than anything else. What I'm suggesting is they don't have enough time as it is to meet the minimum minutes required. This is what I'm hearing from the teachers. So, and I'm sure that, you know, the union president's here, he could probably back that up.
And I don't disagree, I guess, that there are, there have been hotspots in certain sites. It's not across every, every, it's not across the entire district. And we've had, you know, we've put in remedies to try to support those, those specific hotspots. Every year is different in, in, in what we get as, as per the needs of students. And so I think that's what is driving in some, some specific cases and school sites, the needs of the students have increased because of social and emotional needs. And so that's where I think the teachers are having to spend more time with those students to meet all of their, their needs.
Right. And, but I think, let me, let me finish up this one last question. To just elaborate on that, we saw a little chart that was going up as to there being more, right? There's being more students in our district with sped needs. So I think this is pointing at the increase of staffing needs. Is my long story short, you know, didn't want to go on down this rabbit hole because I tend to get, you know, very discombobulated. So that's, that's my, my point is through all of this is that, you know, what we're hearing is that we're not compliant. We're not meeting the needs of our kids. And that's the bottom line, is that we need to meet the needs of our kids. And we got to do what's right by them. And I agree, it should be in the least restrictive environment possible. That's always the best. But in cases where we're pulling them out of, pulling out of a class, make sure their needs are being met, like having minutes met, we need to have staff do that. That was my point.
I just wanted to follow up to some of the questions and share that, you know, once we, we have the report, and I think the benefit of part of the report was being able to actually talk to our teachers who are providing the services. Like that, I think, is a big piece to get that feedback. And allowing us now to use this data point to know that we've had these conversations. And we are looking at what are the needs for our students, because that's always where we start. What do our students need? And we're looking at what supports might need to be put in place. So just letting you know that that is an ongoing conversation that Carla and I and Dr. Zeman are having. And we'll be sharing some information soon.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, clear coffee.
So just to make sure I'm understanding, central office staffing is actually our district office?
Correct.
Okay. And so we did not look at the classroom at all. Okay. Just wanted to make sure I understood that. That way, when I was looking at this, I was like, oh, we got six. Okay, that's great. And then, but now I'm hearing it's just at that district office level, then I have a better understanding. I do believe that, I want to point out that my family is in that autism spectrum, the one that jumped from 2019 to 2022. And COVID had a lot to do with that because you're home with your kid and now you're seeing things that you didn't see before, certain nuances, and you're like, hmm, that's not technically normal. So I do believe that that was a huge reason for it. Might not be over-diagnosis or over, it's just more paying attention to what you didn't see before. So with that being said, he also doesn't have an IEP. That's just because he's super smart, but he has, sorry Julius, problems making friends. But, but he's super. Sorry, Julius, problem making friends, but but he's super, he's not one of those kids, so in that sense. But I'm just hoping that with the information that we are able to gather, we can show that we do need, we definitely need our educators in the classroom. Recommendation of leaving it how it is at the district office. I don't think we need more, but possibly that additional special education. I guess liaison, is that what I'm looking at that you were making a recommendation on?
It actually was to fill the coordinator position that hadn't been filled at the beginning of the year, which I think you've done since the report. Their report was published, I think, back in January, and so since then, the position, I believe, was fulfilled.
Okay, so so we were making a recommendation of something we already did?
No, so what happens is we came in and did interviews. At that time, there was a need. The report came out and then the position was filled after the report came out. So the it there's just it's a timing, it's a timing issue. Yeah, it takes some time to write a report, as you can imagine, and then.
Well, I'm I'm glad to see that even after we've done our report, the update afterwards definitely showing that we've taken those steps, so. At least some of those steps. So thank you. That was pretty much all that I had at the moment. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I really appreciate this being done, and I know that when you've come in as FICMAT, it's very kind of laser focused, and there's a lot of important pieces in special education and. And places to look at. So I understand that there are other places that are still being looked at and reviewed. I want to give, as you did, you did such a good job. Giving the balance of what's happening, like the celebrations as well with where we need to go and what we need to work on. So I appreciated that. And I wanted to give one that watching the way that our teachers co teach is really phenomenal. And going into the classrooms and seeing where it's working well, it's, you know, some of the best I've ever seen in terms of. That co teaching model, and it's it's really, it's really special and it's really good for kids. And I'm so glad that you have, am I correct, that you've expanded that training and that more people have been going through that?
Yeah, and we'll continue for this next year to expand.
Right, good. So with then thinking about. The inclusion models, which are so important in the recommendations that are here with least restrictive environment. I know coming to us is a staffing ratio and we'll be talking about those pieces. But thinking specifically of a classroom, is the recommendation? Let's say, you know, teacher A has a classroom and they and they also is a SCC class at that school. Would the recommendation be to possibly leave space in that classroom so that there is room to mainstream? And can you talk and speak to that a little bit?
So I can share that's a best practice, and that's the way most districts make that work. However, there's collective bargaining implications, right? So we don't prescribe any one method, but oftentimes districts adopt contract language that would allow. Spots to be saved in certain classes for integration. And I think the district is absolutely on the right track, working on MTSS, universal design for learning and co teaching. That really is the industry standard across the state, and I think that that will improve your outcomes for students with disabilities if you're able to stay that course. So but we, because of the collective bargaining, we don't, we don't prescribe any one way to kind of accomplish that integration.
Okay, sure. Thank you for that. Since it is the best practice and we're at the time of year where I know this is where your department works with all the other departments. So as a district and we look at class size coming into the fall. My ask would be that we make sure that we're looking at having spaces for those students. And sometimes, as you know, it might be that they come for an hour at the beginning of the year, and then maybe as you go through the year, it becomes more and more and more. But you want to have that space because otherwise, if your room is completely full packed with your kids and you're just trying to sort of find somewhere for somebody to sit. It can be a huge challenge. So I appreciate hearing that. And I hope that we can follow that best practice. And then my other question is, this speaks to and it it's within our own district. And I know you didn't look at facilities. I know that wasn't part of this, but I'm just thinking about our facilities as we think about recommendations and moving. And some of our schools, and I don't know if it is a space or or what it might be, but I know if you are a family who has a kindergarten or. In an SCC classroom and they might have an inclusion model, they're being mainstreamed. And then when they get to, say, fourth grade, it might be that you have to go to another school. And I know, like, one of our beloved PTO members that, you know, that I'm on PTO with. Who does all this work and said, well, I won't be here next year because my kid will be moving. And so I don't know the solutions to that necessarily if it's a space problem, but is that a space issue? Or is there is a best practice to try to have a continuum so that students stay at a school where they. Know and feel comfortable, or what do you see in terms of of what is being done and what maybe we could do?
So I see everything and in between, right? I mean, I think many districts endeavor to be inclusive as a district, meaning that a student would get to go to their homeschool. And stay at that school throughout their educational program. I think that's the gold standard. But I think the reality is, is that many districts, I don't want to say most, can't do that. And have to, at times, interrupt the educational journey at one school for certain students. I think you'll find that many of the districts in this area have a model where students attend a school and then have to have to move. So I I think it's it's really a matter of your district deciding what a priority, you know, you have many priorities, whether that's the priority is having students continue at at a school. I think that that is the ideal, though, but it's it's not, it's not realistic at many districts in the state.
I think since you've put together this fabulous group, is I forget the name of it, CA?
CAC.
CAC, yes. I didn't want to get it wrong with another acronym of CAC. So maybe then my feedback would be maybe that could be a conversation that goes to that group as well. I know you have things on your plate for looking at next year, but maybe that is a long term goal that we can consider as well as we look at our facilities and updating facilities. And what we're doing. I know, for example, we are looking at our specifically like SCC preschool who. With a remodel and where that might go, and so it may be for a long term conversation is the facility. And then my last comment on this was, I really appreciated all this data. It was really helpful to get to see the students and where we are and where we are in the region. And so for us. When you leave or we have FICMAT come in, is this an easy thing for us to continue to monitor? Or is it, are you the ones that come in and monitor, or we give you the information and you?
No, all of this can be monitored using simple tools like Data Quest, which is available to anyone. You can disaggregate by student group, which is how you break down students with disabilities, and then you could look at proportions of different. Students by race, ethnicity, by language status, by socioeconomic status. And there's recommendations in the report that weren't shared as part of the presentation about what that annual monitoring should look like. And it's just because I think when staff become more aware, even at a school level. They notice some of their own maybe, you know, bias, if that's leading to it, whatever's leading into an over identification, if there is one. People can come more aware just by knowing what the data says.
Okay, I think that sounds great. Then Carla, my question to you is, would our, would an annual update in your vision be next year about this time with with these thoughts? And with your next steps and what the recommendations are to do a progress update?
Yeah, I think we wanted to look at a whole year that at this time would be appropriate.
Okay, all right, that sounds great. Are there any other comments or questions? Okay, thank you for this, and thank you for giving your evening to share with us as well. Okay. Okay, so now that takes us. To the consent agenda. I have no changes to this agenda, and do I have any comments? No public comments on the consent agenda, so unless there's any changes, can I get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Clerk Coffee makes a motion to approve. Trustee Pasati makes a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye to vote aye. And that takes us to number one of eight action items, and here we go. 2023, 2024 Annual Declaration of the Need for Certificated Teaching. And that is Kamaljeet Panoo, who is our Assistant Superintendent of Human Resource.
Yeah, thank you. In anticipation of potential staffing needs, the board has asked to approve the annual declaration of need. For submission to the California Commission on Teacher credentialing. This declaration provides authorization to hire candidates that hire emergency permits and limited permits should we need them. Our HR department will continually actively recruit for all positions, prioritizing fully credentialed staff as a primary source. But this action does provide us some flexibility in the event that we we find a teacher that can qualify for one of these permits.
Are there any questions? Okay, then can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
So moved by Trustee Pasati.
Second.
Seconded by Clerk Coffee and I to vote. Thank you.
Aye.
Oh. Sorry.
It's okay.
All in favor.
Aye.
Now I to vote aye.
There we go. Thank you.
All right, approval of the disclosure of collective bargaining agreement titled. Article 19 Early Childhood Education Programs of the West Sacramento Teachers Association, WSTA, and that is Monique Stovall, our Assistant Superintendent of Business Services.
Thank you. This evening, we are requesting your approval of the disclosure of collective bargaining agreement. What this is, is it's really attesting whether or not we believe we can afford the agreement. And at this point, we do believe that we can afford the agreement. We also shared the analysis with the Yolo County Office of Education. The projected fiscal impact is $4,600,000, I'm sorry, $4,600 from the Child Development Fund.
Okay, and I do not see any public comments. On this item and no questions, so motion to approve by Trustee Pasati. Seconded by Clerk Coffee, I to vote.
Aye.
All in favor. I'm sorry, it's throwing me that there's two of us. All in favor.
Aye.
I to vote aye. Okay. Action item three, approval of the tentative agreement. I'm not restating something right. Okay, thank you. Approval of the tentative agreement between Washington Unified School District and West Sacramento Teachers Association for the period beginning July 1, 2023. Nying July 30, 2025. Kamaljeet Panoo, Assistant Superintendent of Human Resource.
Thank you. Both our bargaining teams met over a few sessions as part of our negotiation cycle. To discuss Article 19, which is now bargained that'll better reflect and align with our current programs over the model of ECE. Or I should say, under the umbrella of ECE, overtime models had changed, and there was not necessarily an alignment with those programs. So we both worked hard to craft language to support. Our programs under that umbrella, which includes our state preschool and our STC preschool programs. Some of the key highlights through the negotiated agreement for this article was that we were able to identify some additional days dedicated towards professional development. Increase in pay for ECE teachers that are in these programs that are aligned with our certificated staff. And clarifying and defining what their work we look like. Want to honestly celebrate both teams. This was a very collaborative process. Where both teams worked together, learned together, and at times we both scratched our heads and agreed that. We needed to do further research and get some experts in the room. A few times, we were both learning together for that common goal. Overall, the experience was very collaborative and not a positional traditional approach. It was very collaborative. I want to give a special shout out to Stephen Wees, who is a teacher over at Stonegate and also was. This was his first year as part of the WSTA bargaining chair position. He represented his team well and stayed in constant communication on how do we move that forward? So really wanted to celebrate this as a as a accomplishment for both teams. So we're asking the board to take.
Thank you. And for this, I do have a public comment. And that is Colin Malik.
I get three minutes now.
Yes, you do.
Thank you, Assistant Soup, Kamaljeet Panoo, for taking the time to give a shout out to the bargaining team. It is much appreciated and the relationship. Not speaking as a WSTA representative right now because this is a public comment, I will say is much appreciated. I did want to spend this time to acknowledge. As we've and they are talking about bargaining in this action item here. That it has been, this was my one point that I did want to mention, was that it's been two years, 59 days since March 13, 2020. Today was the day that the CDC lifted the PHE order for COVID-19. And that while we are assuming a presumption of returning to normal, that things are still challenging for our young people out there. That things are still difficult for our unduplicated populations and our our BIPOC communities, as well as our LGBTQ plus communities. In this post-COVID era. And on this day, two years and 59 days since that horrific Friday, the 13th of March 13, 2020. I want to recognize and acknowledge the work, the contribution that all have done since that time. I think it's important. I think it's vital. It's been understated and barely in the news. For me and for teachers and for our entire community, school board included, and everybody that we work with. Through HR and business services and head services, it was. The biggest lift I've ever done, you know, and I've participated in two wars. And to to come through it and still see faces up here that I respect and admire and appreciate and still wish to collaborate with. I think it's important to acknowledge the lifting of that public health order of COVID and recognize the path that we've gone down. As well as recognize the extreme amount of work that we still have to do on behalf of our student, staff and our community. With that, I'll give you back 55 seconds.
Okay, thank you so much. Are there any questions? Okay, is there a motion?
All moved.
Okay, so moved by Trustee Pasati.
Second.
Seconded by Clerk Coffee, all in favor.
Aye.
I to vote aye. And that now takes us to the approval of the agreement with AP Construction Services for Project Inspector Services for the Westfield Village Elementary School Modernization Project. Monique Stovall, our Assistant Superintendent of Business Services.
We are requesting approval of a contract for a project inspector for West Village Elementary School Modernization Project. A project inspector is responsible for ensuring that school facilities are facilities are safe, functional and compliant with state and local regulations. The estimated cost is $217,600 funded through the Measure Z Fund.
Okay, and I do not see any public comments. Are there any board comments or questions? Hey, can I have a motion to approve?
I motioned.
A motion by Clerk Coffee.
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Pasati, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
I to vote aye. Thank you. And that now takes us to the approval of agreement with Universal Engineering Services. For earthwork, observation and testing services for the Westfield Village Modernization Project. Again, with Monique Stovall, our Assistant Superintendent of Business Services.
Thank you. We are requesting approval of this contract for earthwork. At our Westfield Village Elementary School Modernization Project. What earthwork is, it's excavation, it's it's the groundwork. So making sure that all of that is done appropriately so we can have a great project. The estimated cost for this agreement is $49,895 funded through our Measure Z.
Okay, I don't see any public comment. Are there any board questions or comments?
Quick question. Is this like sequoist stuff or is this more like grading of certain areas?
More digging in. So when we need to dig into the ground, then we have this organization here to make sure that it's done properly. And so if they need to say pause, and they're engineers, then they say pause. They also look through our plan. To make sure that when we're digging in, we're digging in right.
We're not getting their gas liner.
Thanks.
And I moved.
Okay, moved by Trustee Pasati.
Second.
Seconded by Clerk Coffee, all in favor.
Aye.
I to vote aye. Thank you. So now it takes us to the approval of the 912 science adoption with style education, and that is Matt Ainsworth, our Director of Curriculum, Instruction and Professional Learning.
Good evening again. Earlier tonight, we had a public hearing for the style science adoption. As we shared earlier, Curriculum Council chose to move forward with the recommendation. And tonight's staff is requesting the board's consideration in approving the recommendation from Curriculum Council. To adopt style science for the 912 science curriculum beginning in 2324 for a total of six years. The cost of the adoption will be $148,535 paid with instructional material funds.
And I do not see any public comment, any board comments or questions. And I do not see any public comment, any board comments or questions.
I just want to say that I was at the meeting and it looks really cool and I'm really excited and I already know it's going to be fantastic. And I don't know if any material is over there, but if there is, y'all just need to check it out. I know there's not many of you here.
And and Department Chair Jeremy Heaven Martinez was here for the public hearing. I forgot to bring him up and I let him go. I said, don't stay for this. He's going to be very excited.
Yeah, I just wanted to point that out.
Okay. All right, with that, I will make a motion. And seconded by trustee Pizzotti, all in favor.
Aye.
I too vote aye. Thank you. All right. So.
You've had a lot of motion.
Approval of the renewal of River City High School Physical Education Four by Four Block Requirement Renewal, again with Matt Ainsworth, our Director of Curriculum Instruction and Professional.
A public hearing was held on April 27 at the regular Board of Education meeting regarding the River City High School Physical Education Four by Four Block Requirement Renewal. Ed Code Section 5122A, pupils must attend physical education for four hundred minutes every ten school days. To comply with this statute, River City must submit a waiver to the State Board of Education requesting that their students complete the physical education required minutes every ten school days for one term instead of throughout the year. Due to the ninety minute block scheduling schedule structure, River City students not only meet the required yearly minutes but exceed them, thereby meeting Ed Code. Staff is requesting the board's consideration approving the waiver, so Washington Unified may submit the waiver request to the State Board.
Okay, there's no public comments.
Whatever happened in the days when it had PE every or every day?
These students say do, they get to have every day, but it's every day for one term because they do the four by four. So they get a year's worth of PE in a.
Yeah, you looked excited about that, then you changed.
I was like, oh.
Ninety minutes of PE is.
It's a lot.
Not enough. Love PE. I loved PE. Anyway, never mind. I'll move.
Okay. All right, so motion by trustee Pizzotti, seconded by clerk Coffee, all in favor.
Aye.
I too.
Thank you.
All right, and now the approval of the physical education exemption for juniors and seniors who have met exemption requirements again. Matt Ainsworth, our Director of Curriculum Instruction and Professional.
Thank you. The school district Board of Education, in accordance with Ed Code 51241C1, may grant a permanent exemption from courses in physical education if a student applies who is sixteen years of age older and has been enrolled in grade 10 for one academic year or longer. We have an attachment of students who have completed the exemption application process and have met Education Code 51241C1 requirement. Tonight, we're asking for approval from the Board of Education for the 11th and 12th grade PE exemption list for the 23, 24 year, and a shout out to Assistant Principal Holly Buckley. The last couple of years, it's been a struggle and we usually bring this to you in October or November of the year they're being exempted, but this is for next school year, so I'm very proud of the work of the River City team.
Okay, great. No public comments, any questions? Okay. I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Okay, motion made by myself, seconded by clerk Coffee, all in favor.
Aye.
I too vote aye. Thank you. And that gets us through all of our action items, and now we are at Board Governance. And this is our reconfirmation of the second regular Board of Education meeting date for May 2023. Dr. Hildreth.
Thank you, President Kirby Gonzalez. This is really, just want to make sure we remind the public of the change of the date and the day of our next regularly scheduled board meeting. Students are, make us the happiest and getting to see them at graduation is a wonderful, wonderful experience. And so on Thursday, May 25, that is the commencement ceremony for our students at Washington Millau College High School, and that normally would be a board meeting day. And so in order to allow all trustees to attend the ceremony and support our students, the board approved on March 30 to have the board meeting on Wednesday, the 24th, instead of Thursday, the 25th. And we also looked, because City Hall is not available on that day, so the next board meeting will be on Wednesday, May 24, and it will be held at the district office in the multipurpose room, not here in City Hall and not in Room 75. We will be in the multipurpose. So just wanted to make sure we make sure everyone is aware and we don't have anyone coming here and then coming to the district office with an additional level of frustration.
And I appreciate the signs that are on Room 75 now. It's very, you know, we have great visuals. What will it look like that evening in terms of on that door and the space to get to the NPR in order to get to that space? If they go to that door, will they go around and come in through the street? Do we know? Will have a good sign on the door maybe to just show them how to get in?
We have a sign available that we can display and then staff parking across the garden area will be available for anybody that wants to. We will have signage available.
Okay, good. Perfect, because that can get a little tricky if they're probably coming in through the front. Okay, great. Any questions on that or comments? Okay. Then that now takes us to our superintendent and board comment. So super.
Thank you. I want to acknowledge that it is officially National Teacher Appreciation Week and we started the week, it's the theme of Teachers Drive the Future, and it celebrates the idea that teachers are not just educators, they are one of the key drivers for every child's journey to their future. And we know that our teachers here in Washington Unified change lives, thousands of lives every day. We know that our teachers are the ones who inspire our youth become future leaders to be innovators, problem solvers, artists, the creatives that they are. And so just wanted to highlight that and celebrate that yesterday, May 10, was actually California Teachers Association or our CTA 2023 Day of the Teacher. And the theme was California Educators Planting Seeds, Inspiring Students and Future Educators. So we just want to highlight and thank all of our our teachers and we sent some goodies to each school. We're going to do that again for Classified Appreciation Week coming up soon, and we have t-shirts for everyone and there's, there's, you know, that's just a little piece of things because it's such an important job. And no matter what job I have, I started as a teacher and I will always be a teacher and I'm the daughter of two teachers. So it's wonderful to highlight the profession. So wanted to highlight that. Also, May 10 was our National School Nurse Day, which reminds us of the roles that school nurses play in our schools and the immense contributions that they make to each of our schools. And so we are so grateful for our school nurses who continually meet the needs of all of our students. They advocate for them. They make sure that we think about the needs, especially the healthcare needs of our students when we're doing programming, when we're talking about our summer programs. Our nurses are stepping in saying, do we have health support even with ELOP extending into July when most of the staff is gone? We're already putting that plan in place. So thank you to our school nurses and our health aides for keeping us focused on making sure we can meet truly all the needs of our students. I also want to give a special shout out to our food service professionals because May 5 was School Lunch Hero Day, and you can visit any one of our amazing schools. And these individuals are the engines behind the scenes, preparing healthy food, adhering to nutrition standards, navigating student food allergies, and always offering smiles and service to our students. It's such an important job that our students are well fed because we all understand that if you're hungry, you're not going to be able to focus in class. So we want to highlight our food service professionals. Next, I want to highlight that our Yolo County Special Education Local Plan Area, also known as SELPA, if you hear that acronym. And we've heard a lot today about the CAC. That's actually the Community Advisory Committee, and they honored recipients at an award ceremony this past Monday on May 8. And this annual award recognizes individuals for providing outstanding service to children or adults with special needs in Yolo County. And again, we want to highlight Jennifer, I want to get her name right, so help me, Carla. Scrimshaw, Jennifer Scrimshaw, an educational, no, education specialist at Southport School. And then Jonathan Penelosa, our speech language pathologist at Riverbank. So congratulations and we really appreciate all you do for our kids. This past week, we had, and we recognized our WUSD Employees of the Year and Human Resources, thank you for all of the work that went into that wonderful recognition ceremony that celebrates various employees reaching years of service milestones and our retirees and our employees of the year. And I do want to highlight those who were, who received certain awards. We had our primary teacher of the year was Mieko Mendenhall, PE at Stonegate. Our secondary teacher of the year was Elizabeth Estella Burkholder, our STEM ELD teacher from Westfield. Our support staff of the year was Kristy Fanning, a school psychologist at Elkhorn. Our clerical and admin services award recipient was Linda Tenoco, who's a school secretary at River City High. For custody, custodian and maintenance services, we had Sergio Rivera, who was a custodian at River City High. Food and Nutrition Services Award recipient, Candace Ritter, who's the cook manager at Southport. For Health and Student Services, Nan Giordanango, I hope I said that right, Nan. She's our health aide at Westfield. For our parent educator, it's Amrit Singh, who's a parent educator three at Westmore Oaks. For Technology Services, it was John Barca, who is a network systems administrator. In Transportation Services, it's Jody Blevins, are one of our school bus drivers. And then our Excellence in Education Award for Central or District Office Staff was Stacy Tran, Director of English Learners and Support Program. So congratulations. Then lastly, I just want to highlight and and shout out to our wonderful students at River City. I was able to attend the drama performance at Honk on Friday. It was so wonderful, such a wonderful storyline, and the students were fabulous and they had multiple roles and changing costumes. And President Kirby Gonzalez was there with her her children and I saw some of our teachers who were there. I know Vice President Wong was there the weekend before. Mario went the weekend before. So we all really, you know, it's, Virginia was there. You know, we, that's the fun part, you know, just being able to see the students do what they love, that's what keeps them in school. That really is what keeps them in school, whether it's the athletics or VAPA. And I'm so grateful that we are able to support their creative spirit. And then I also want to thank our Southport PTO for inviting me to their meeting yesterday. We had a really good conversation about what's going well at Southport, what supports they like, and really a question of what did we need as the district? And so that's always appreciated too, of how can our community help what we do? So I just want to thank our Southport PTO for the invite and I look forward to joining more PTO and parent meetings next year. And with that, that's it for me.
Thank you so much. trustee Pizzotti.
Let's see. First, I want to recognize and congratulate Dr. Hildreth for joining the Rotary. As you could see in the presentation, the Rotary Club makes donations or is, has adopted Westfield Elementary. And they've been doing some very wonderful charitable work and it is fabulous. And I, you know, as a fellow Rotarian, welcome. Anybody who else would like to join, please see me. We will make sure you get into your very first meeting. Also acknowledge Kristy Jordan, who is also a fellow Rotarian. Came up and gave an absolute great presentation about VAPA. And with that, I wanted to acknowledge the the students that won the awards, but not only the students that won the awards, the ones that even participated, right? The ones that actually, you know, said, this is, this is a love, this is a passion. And the teachers that thought to enter them into the contest. I think that was, you know, really wonderful. A lot of times art doesn't get a lot of acknowledgement. And so I do want to definitely, you know, especially since I'm married and artist myself, you know, I wanted to definitely acknowledge our arts and our thespians and our bands. Because as you can tell, I have a soft spot for athletics, right? But those that don't get the the scholarships, the full rides, the things like that, I would love for them to be celebrated and highlighted as often as possible. So thank you for that. And then there's a couple other things. There's some things that I heard tonight that I wanted to make sure that we definitely, that we definitely consider. I heard that there hasn't, I heard, I'm not sure if I heard it correctly. There was a comment made by one of the teachers that we don't have mass shooter training, or at least not ones throughout the year. So if that's the case, then maybe we need to have some sort of PD on that. Or if not, maybe we need to have, you know, some deep dives into what is best practices and what should we? So that's, you know, especially since we've been seeing so many actors throughout country, you know, and we've seen too many of them just on the natural. Driving me. Want us to do well, fair to, God forbid. There was another comment about class sizes, and I'm not going to wade into, you know, what to do with class sizes because I think that's more bargaining issue. One thing I did hear about i- when a teacher was that they're not, if they're being provided twenty six kids in a classroom, they're not being, they're not having their budgets adjusted, their in-room budget adjusted. So if you have twenty six kids in a class, then your your in-room classroom budget could go accordingly. So if you're, you know, I would even say if there's a district-wide average of what kids' level is, then we need to look at, you know, there's eighteen kids in one classroom at one portion of the school district and twenty six at another. What's the average for district level wide? We need to do some kind of evaluation of finding how much more each kid costs in terms of, you know, material, because it shouldn't be on the teacher. And we hear time and time and time again, how much out of pocket he and that don't happen. So when a teacher is taking on additional students, they definitely need to have their in-classroom budgets, materials taken care of. That's something I, you know, I want to have out there. And I want to say I appreciate the FICMAT report. That was very helpful. I was a little disappointed to hear that this only covered, this only covered the headquarters administrative and and support staff. I was hoping that it was going to cover, I was hoping it was going to cover the in-classroom staff. That would have been certainly helped in terms of their understanding of where we are meeting our our needs and where we aren't. So, you know, I'm not another FICMAT study right away. We certainly need to, we certainly need to take a look at what our minutes are and are we in. So that's something that is very concerning to me. You know, I was. So that's something that is very concerning to me. You know, as a kid that should have been identified. You know, for sped, I, you know, slipped through the crack and I don't.
Okay. Thank you, Clark Coffee.
Try, try and make this a little shorter than typical. Way to go athletes, way to go artists. Honk was amazing. So much fun. My kids enjoyed it. My youngest loved the turkey, had to take a picture with him. Family, friends were up on the stage. It was great to see them in their element. So it was, it was amazing. Teacher Appreciation Day, Week, phenomenal. I know my kids know that they need to respect their teachers. And on the specific day, they needed to acknowledge them. And if they didn't, let me know. So also want to shout out to Monique for going out there to Yolo and talk to the kids. Let them know how the whole system works as far as like the handball wall and for playing with them. I heard you, you got a few in there. So good job for you. Cause I appreciate the transparency and I know that they do too. Job well done. Great. We love our nurses and our health aides. I just much appreciated. You guys really keep our kids safe. To all the employees for a recognition at the recognition award ceremony. It was great. I'm gonna be honest, I didn't know I was going to be on stage. I will be better dressed next time. Not prepared. Lastly, or not lastly, but another thing. To the food service professionals, you guys absolutely rock. I remember when I was in, it was middle school, I was, you know, tween, I'm hungry and I would found as many pennies as I could for lunch and I went to this lunch lady up there like before anybody was let in. And I was like, look, I, I don't want to be doing this in front of all y'all. Can, here's my pennies. And they looked at me like, really? This is what you're bringing? And I'm like, no, no, no. We're going to take care of you. And ever since then, I made, I was able to have a meal to eat. It's hard. And so, and then when I went, was at Westfield, big shout out to my tia who used to work there as a lunch lady and to all her crewmates. They're phenomenal. Kept all those kids in line, straight line. You don't get no, no straight line. You don't get no food. No, I'm just kidding. They didn't do that. But they had a straight line to make sure they were, they were not rowdy. And I swear that's the reason why my son, my first born was nine and a half pounds because they made sure I was fed. Just throwing it out there. So also note, I'll piggyback off what you said, which was going on at Bridgeway. That P A system, whatever's going on, let's find out. Cause they were saying that they can't hear when they're out there, even in their classroom, they're not able to hear if there's maybe a volume or maybe there's a wire or something that's not 100% you know, connected. Let's make sure that, that they can hear when they're out there. That is pretty much all I have. And on that note, Happy Mother's Day. That's it.
You're sitting with three mothers, but it's fine. One of my favorite hats. Okay, so a few things. When we had our two by two with the city, so our city two by two. And we discussed our, specifically we discussed our parks. And the park right across from district office, Escape Park, I'm blanking my names. Blessacre Park. Thank you. And so they have some really exciting plans for that space. It's really, really exciting. In terms of shade, who knew that we have a great district facility right there that will be shade? Which we were laughing at. So they're going to take the, the shed that we have that's there currently. They'd like to turn it into a big shade structure and just do some really great upgrades, which is really, really exciting. It did make me think later, what I wish I would have brought up, but I think I want to kind of put it out in the universe that we need to start thinking about really considering is school districts best really asset in terms of financial is land. And so I think it is an important discussion that we have with the city. That is a space that I don't see us using for school needs. And so before we, this is a district who has regularly given space for free. And I think it is, it is probably worth a conversation with the city in terms of do they have land they'd like to swap for that? Cause it very much they would be the users for it. Or maybe we should go to consider some of our properties going out through public process. For a bit. Obviously we wanted this to be a great space for our community. So it, it's not about getting money for us. It's about being fiscally prudent for our taxpayers and for our students when we think about our finances. So I wish I would have said it in the meeting, but I didn't, right as I walked out, I wish I would have. So I wanted to say that in this space as we consider that. But then we also have our joint use facilities, which operate differently. And so the other one we talked about, which is, was really exciting, which is our Westmore Oaks. As we know, the school was remodeled and beautiful, but the play facility was not. And so they walked to the old Claritin campus to do their sports. Cause you really can't play out there. It's not safe. There's holes from the groundhogs and everything else. So that, this is very exciting. We have our district partnership. We have some money to put forward from our Measure B. And then the city has money as well. And they're pursuing some grants in other spaces so that that would be a facility, of course, first and foremost, our property, our students. But then also for the community to be using as well, because that's a community that does not have a park right there. And so using a walking trail and others, I think it's a beautiful, that's a perfect partnership for the city and school district. And I'm excited that the city is supporting that work move forward as. So to be coming on that. And then in terms of, that's our two by two. In terms of our students, I visited our Gender Studies Club. Actually, our council member, Verna Sepesio Hole asked as well how she could support students. And, and they welcomed us to come through. Mr. Hook did and had a good conversation with the kids. And then I got on our, our dais and we saw these. And I think you know, we really like swag. I'm assuming here goes, is this yours? They're so, and I'm not letting them go. So these are beautiful. They're the progressive pride flag with our statement, the equity, excellence, empowerment for every student, every day. And I'm wondering if maybe Gender Studies Club, about ten students or so, I'm wondering if these could specifically go to Mr. Hook so he could give them to his students. I think they'd feel really seen and, and really think these are cool too. So that would be great. Thank you. And some of those students were also in the honk performance, which was fun to get to see. They are performing a drag show. They're working hard. River City High School on drag show. They are the performers. It is though, the same evening as State of the City. And so we did let them know that there's a it is the same night State of the City, but the night before they've been talking about having a preview. And so we talked about how that would be great for the district. Now, one piece though, that's important for us to understand is they have to work to be safe because that's very vulnerable to have students perform in this space. And you know, you could be opening yourself up. We've heard, while it wasn't said in a, in a public meeting recently, we did have public comments submitted to us that were in the record now that have been very negative to our trans community. And so we have to be aware of that and the students were very aware of that as well. And so they were talking about how to make sure that they can have pre-sales and tickets. So you're connected to the student in some way, which I think is a really fair way to do that. And I'm glad that they are doing this, but I'm glad that they're doing it in a way to make sure to, to do it well for the students. The students are, are safe in that environment as well. Okay. The next piece is I had a great visit at Westfield Elementary School last weekend. Oh, I can't wait for their new facility. I know it will be some growing pains as everyone has to pack up, you know, for break, but the rewards are so high. And there's really no way around that. You just, you have to pack up to have a school remodel. So, but what was really exciting about Westfield that I wanted to share here is I visited many classrooms, but I want to speak to the middle school students' classrooms because I, I went in those rooms and I always go in, of course, with with nothing but to see how are people supported? What do they need? It's never gotcha or anything like that. But what was happening was just really phenomenal in terms of the relationships. You could just feel a good vibe and they were doing some Friday kind of competition and games. And the room was just running so well. And there was such good respect between kids and teachers. And it was just, it was a really great space to be in. And when we walked out, I learned that those were brand new teachers in their very first year and one was an intern. And so what a good job, you know, in terms of one elevating folks and then I'm sure through bits and other pieces being supported. And then to have them here. So we just want to keep them and keep supporting them. Cause that was, it was really great to see that. And then I also had a great visit at Stonegate Elementary School as well. And we also talked about facilities and you know, they have little looks and crannies where they're working hard to where can we move kids or how can we best support kids and, and use this space for this piece and this for another. And it was, I really appreciated hearing all that context. And it sounds like what I'm looking forward to hearing more of too, is as we bring in the partnerships through that ELOP dollars, that there might be, you know, we talked about bringing in a portable. I know it's not our favorite thing, but a space, space, a place for more space and that during the school day that could be used. And that is a facility, like a few of ours that really needed some more space. So that felt like a win-win opportunity there to have that too. So I appreciated that and the good things happening there. I wanted to share that there is also speaking of the ELOP dollars, there is a, am I saying that right? ELOP dollars? That there is now a community forum. So families can hear about what the expanded learning opportunities mean. So I know I saw one for Bridgeway Island, which is on May twenty-third at five thirty, but I think that's really exciting because especially our families who are working are anxious about what does this look like for my children? And how can I, will I still have space when I go to work? And so I, I just really appreciate putting those together quickly and helping support kids on those.
Just going to say that there is going to be a meeting for parents at every site. So we're just starting with, I think Bridgeway and Southport. Those were just the first that, ones that were confirmed. But on the website, there should be all the, the dates as they are confirmed at websites.
Thank you. I'm so glad that you shared that because I think that, I don't know, I, that's what I get a lot of emails on is being nervous about childcare and what that looks like. So I'm excited for that. And I, as a mom, I'm excited for, for my kids too, in terms of what that. Okay. Those were my biggest pieces. This is also Mental Health Awareness Month. And so I want to recognize that as well, that we make sure in, in the update that we, that we share this month out resources and whatnot for our families. And yes, thank you to all of our teachers who we so appreciate. As a mom, as a board member and as a colleague, I appreciate the educators and all that they do here. I appreciate, gosh, those cafeteria workers. Cause my daughter, I didn't even know she was doing it for a while, but she gets a second breakfast every single day. Cause she rides her bike and she likes getting there early. And now I know why she likes getting there early. Cause she likes that second breakfast to get there as well. And then of course, our nurses and other health office, who she also likes a little bit too much. And she's in that, that room for every single scrape too. Okay. So thank you to just everyone in this district for all they do and for HR for that really beautiful celebration of all of our employees who really deserve it. So thank you. All right. That takes us to future board agenda items. And I heard the safety piece. Can I add to that? That I brought up last time that I had come for a portion of the behavioral threat assessment work that's happening with the police department as well. And in that meeting, there were other agencies too, and Woodlands SRO was there. And so I, I would appreciate if we could weave that into this with a safety update in terms of how our educators and our classified employees and our substitutes are trained because it, it was very alarming to hear if there are staff members that don't know the process. And not necessarily, I think we've worked to kind of move away from the idea of putting our kids through some of those trainings. I think we know best practices is not necessarily to do that. It's really, but the staff training is really critical. And having everyone know. With that, I'll also share that we use it where I teach an IM that pops right up on our computer when we have messages. Of course you have your alarms and everything else in P A system. But it is important that we have some kind of way to quickly communicate with all of our staff of what is happening. Whether it's through apps that people do, although you can't rely on all visiting teachers and classified to have it. But just so we make sure that we really look at what our communication is, I think is important as we think towards August and moving into August. Because you know, the flag was at half staff today teaching and sometimes you almost forget which shooting it was at. You know, because there's just, there's just unfortunately this, this space that we live in. And, and it's not only active shooter drills that we need in a, a good system. So if we could kind of add that comprehensive safety piece update with the behavior threat assessment. We have our community schools update that will come to us May twenty-fourth. Then we have our board meeting calendar that will come to us. Recommendations from many task force, equity, middle school math, visual and performing arts, May twenty-fourth. That will buckle up. I'm excited for that. That'll be a lot. Any other things? I know. Any others to add? Okay. That feels like good list. Okay. All right. Then with that, the meeting is adjourned.